November 28th, I'm Linda Vakin, Chair of the Ordinance Committee. With me on Zoom, I have Counselor Maldonado Velez and Counselor Cocaine Givner. So what I'd like to do, if a member is willing, is I'd like to entertain a motion to take up item four.
A motion to take up item four?
All in favor? Oh, but hang on, let me back up and read the motion. I believe we may be hybrid, so in case somebody shows up in the chambers, I'll just read this motion so that we can do regular orders. So I'd like to make the motion to take a roll call vote that for the purposes of this meeting would be applicable to all motions to remove an item from the table, place items on the table, open a public hearing, package items, or suspend the rules unless there is an objection. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, so on the roll call, Vakin, yes. Givner?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we're in proper order, so now I can entertain the motion to take up item four. And we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so item four was an order filed by Counselors Maldonado, Velez, and Givner, and ordered that the City Council add a section for battery storage facilities to the zoning ordinance to reflect technology advancements and future need for such installations. New facilities will be reviewed through Section 10, Major Site Tan Review. This public hearing was closed on 10/24, and we went through a couple of times various questions, concerns, and language within the zoning ordinance. We have received a recommendation from the Planning Board that we would approve that text language to add for these large and small facilities, the large ones in business zones or industrial parks, and the other ones in all zones within the limitations that are described in the text language, limiting the size of the storage unit to the power of the residence itself, so that it couldn't exceed and become a large project, say it was a single-family home. Has everybody had a chance to review and feel comfortable with the text language that we went over at the prior meeting? Are there any other questions or concerns on it, since we have both of the makers here? Counselor Givner?
Hi, yes. I just wanted to, sorry, I'm a little cold. I just wanted to just confirm that the language that we talked about is all reflected in the attachments we receive with the, from Planning that have like the Planning recommendation and the final document and definitions.
So I think if we stipulate in our vote that we are approving the final revised version that was presented at the last meeting, I think we'll be safe on that, and we can ask Jeffrey to be sure, because I do think we had more than one version, and...
So the versions, the versions that are in our packet for today, for this, are not necessarily the same as we've talked about?
No, they should be the same one that we talked about, but let us verify from Jeffrey that that is the case, because I wouldn't want to say it without being sure. So Jeffrey, could you let us know if that is the case?
So I'm looking at the way they were labeled when they sent to me, and the ones that were in the packet of labels specifically say, looking at them right now, one says "final definition document," the other says "planning final document."
Right.
And they're dated 11/14.
So at our last... So if we can't confirm that those documents are the same, maybe we'll have to table it so everybody can look it over and know that they are.
Well, the, sorry, Madam Chair?
You have the floor.
Okay. So the original document isn't here with the information, and I don't have, I didn't have the original document in front of me. So I just figured that these were reflecting the original document and adding any language that we spoke about in the meeting, but now I don't know.
Well, and the version that, the physical version I have in my hand, because I'm not there, is the one that was labeled number four from our prior meeting.
Okay.
But if you folks, as the maker of the order, would feel more comfortable to hang on to what you have so that we can compare it to what I have, I'd be fine with that.
I'm under the impression it's the same. I guess I would ask Counselor Maldonado Velez if he noticed any differences?
There really, it looks like the document, everything that we discussed from last meeting. The only, honestly, the only mistake I see is for Section A24B1, it says "principle uses" instead of "principal uses," but that was just a misspelling. But everything else seems pretty much was been discussed the last couple of months for this.
Okay, if you folks are comfortable with it, I'll entertain a motion to accept the language with the correction to the spelling and move it forward to City Council, and we'll have a little time to, now in the meeting, if any further questions come up.
I think that's reasonable. I would make a motion to accept the language.
It's okay.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call, I guess, just to be official. Vakin, yes. Givner?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes on a 3-0 vote. I'm not seeing any other members.
Counselor Jordan is on, and is wherever I just came out of.
Oh, okay. For some, oh, I see Israel Rivera. And why am I not seeing Counselor Jordan? Counselors Jordan and Rivera, if you heard enough of this discussion and you wish to vote on item four?
Yes.
We have three affirmative votes. Counselor Rivera, was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, and Counselor Jordan?
Yes.
Okay, so that is a 5-0 vote, and that'll go to City Council at our next meeting. Thank you.
Just before you move forward, just a quick clarification. Can you just clarify the language that was being corrected, so I can make sure it gets done?
The spelling?
Yeah, the spelling.
Counselor Maldonado Velez, did you say?
Yes, so Jeffrey, it's on the definitions page. Second page, it says A24B1. It's the document titled Final Definition.
All right, and you said second page?
Yep, A24B1. I'm just missing a C. That's not ours.
Oh, A24B1, and there should be a C.
Yeah, where it says "principle uses," it should be "principal uses."
Oh, it should be "principal uses," okay. Okay.
Okay.
That's an easy fix. Yeah, I'll make sure that that gets done before the final draft is done.
So did Planning indicate when they'll join us?
I did just let Sharon know that you all were finishing up on the battery storage discussion. So I have a sense that means they'll be coming over.
Okay, we'll give them a couple minutes.
All right, yeah. Sharon says they're coming. Nathan's going to be in person. I guess the rest will be on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Does your vice chair maybe want to open the meeting?
Yeah, we might as well. I think we just got a message from her. She's not able to access the Zoom from where she is, so. I would like to, can I get a motion from someone on my board to open the Planning Board, Ordinance Committee Joint Public Hearing for the Planning Board?
Regarding which one, Kate?
Which one are we starting with? Our first one is, we're starting Public Hearing.
Tiny Houses? That's our number one.
Okay. Can we have a motion to open the public hearing on Tiny Houses, continued from March 7th, April 25th, and September 26th?
I'll make that motion.
I second. I second.
By, by roll call vote, Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Nathan?
Yes.
Gernander?
Yes.
And Kate?
Yes.
Thank you. So, Ordinance Committee, I'd like to entertain a motion to take up item one and open the public hearing.
Motion to take up item one and open the public hearing.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, item one, the public hearing filed by Counselor McGee, ordered that the zoning ordinance be amended to add a section for tiny houses in addition to amending Section 2 definitions and any other sections that may apply to this use. And this is a joint hearing with the Planning Board that was continued from April 25th and September 26th. I would just like to let the committee know that I had received a communication from Planning asking for more specifics about the intention of this order relative to tiny houses, because apparently there is quite a broad view and very different ordinances from community to community in this regard. So I did, and it was very recent that I reached out to President McGee, because he was the filer of the order, if there were specific approaches or anything that he wanted to take. And I did get one communication from him today, but not on this particular order. So I really do not know what the origin of it was, unless other members on ordinance do.
Um, Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor Givner?
I mean, it sounds like we would need input from the maker of the order to get to what kind of size and maybe limitations we would want for this. So I would, I would suggest tabling it to get input from him. I don't really know how else to proceed, because I didn't bring anything to add to this.
Yeah, and I didn't get an email to be able to... Yes.
If I can say, I think that we may have cracked the case here a little bit. We did get a communication today from Erin Vega at OPEC, and I don't have confirmation from him that he's the one that asked for this to be filed, but it does seem that he had some sense of what the intent was that he sent to us. And so we may be able to start proceeding, but Lauren Niles, our associate member, is the person who's really been doing most of the research on this issue. I don't know, Lauren, I don't know if you have anything that you want to say at this point.
Well, I just saw the email from Erin, like, right before we sat down to the meeting, so I really haven't had much time to digest. I would love to know from Counselor McGee if, in fact, this is what he was requesting. We can share the email with the Ordinance Committee and just make sure that this is what was the request. We basically, as we dug into this, found that every, sorry, we found that every town has a different size limitation, different, like, setbacks, different utilities. So it's a very big question, and we just needed a little bit of narrowing it down. It's not just about, like, the size of the tiny home. And then, do we mean mobile tiny homes? Do we mean physical, staying-in-one-place tiny homes? Like, what are we talking about here? So just a little more guidance would be really helpful to guide the research.
Okay, so I'm going to take an educated guess that Counselor McGee filed this perhaps on behalf of OPEC.
Okay.
And so that Erin's guidance probably would be helpful.
Okay, maybe we can just send back an email to Counselor McGee and Erin and just be like, making sure we're all on the same...
That sounds good, and if I could suggest, because we're coming up to year end, and I know for you folks, that doesn't make that big of a difference, but on the council side, it potentially makes more difference. So I'm wondering if I could suggest that we continue this hearing to January 23rd, 2024, which is where we continued one other hearing until, because that worked with your schedule. But I'm not sure where Ordinance Committee will be in January, but it's far enough into the month that whoever would be chairing it would have time to either change it or make it work. So I would suggest that, given that the year-end will not afford another council meeting.
So just from my board, I will not be present at that meeting. So I don't know if that wants, if that means you want to continue to a different date, or if I can just report back to you guys and you can share the findings at that point.
My sense, Lauren, would be, why don't we put that date in the calendar anyway? Knowing that you won't be there, you can pass on to one of us a status report. We're certainly not going to finish this topic on that date anyway. Between now and then, you can check and to see whether, you know, Erin's questions are actually the intent behind the order that Counselor McGee filed, and then we can go back to the research, because there, you know, as Lauren has found, there's really a lot to wade through.
Yeah, and we have compiled quite a lot, so hopefully we can, once we have a little more guidance, dig in a little more.
Right, and I would like to note that in the public hearing, we have received some documents of other sample ordinances that have come to committee. And because we are in a public hearing, just in case there's anybody on Zoom or in the chambers that did wish to speak on this particular issue, I just want to make sure they can be heard if there is anybody. I'm not seeing any hands. I'm not...
You have one hand up.
You see a hand?
Yeah, Kaylee DeGrace. I believe she was one of the ones who provided some info in one of the last sessions.
Okay, so Ms. DeGrace, if you would like to speak on this item, you may. We're in a public hearing.
Sure, I just wanted to say, you know, I'm currently living in Holyoke in a, you know, standard ranch, but I own two movable tiny houses, and I've been working to legalize them across the state of Massachusetts. And I definitely think that this is a direction that Holyoke should go in, just housing crisis, sustainable living. There's really no downside to it, so I'm just here to express my gratitude that this is something that the city is talking about, and, you know, to hopefully offer anything that I can help to move it forward.
Okay, thank you. And just for our records, can you give me your address?
99 Meadowbrook Road.
Okay, thank you very much, and thanks for your comments. So now I'd like to entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to January 23rd, 2024?
Motion to continue item one, public hearing, to January 23rd?
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And on our side, can we have a motion to continue the public hearing on Tiny Houses to January 23rd, 2024?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
By roll call vote, Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Nathan?
Yes.
Gernander?
Yes.
And Kate?
Yes.
So is your number two the telecom?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
All right, shall I start? Can I have a motion to reopen the Planning Board public hearing on wireless telecom facilities and antennas from March 7th, April 25th, May 23rd, and August 22nd of this year?
Still move?
Second.
By roll call vote, Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Nathan?
Yes.
Gernander?
Yes.
And Kate?
Yes.
So I'd like to entertain a motion to take up item two and reopen the public hearing for the zoning ordinance on wireless telecom?
Yeah, a motion to take up item two and reopen the public hearing for, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the public hearing was ordered by Counselor McGee that the zoning ordinance, Section 7.8 Wireless Telecommunication Facilities and Antennas, be amended to include small wireless facilities. And the joint hearings have been held with the Planning Board as referenced by our Planning Board. Tonight, in your packets, you received a lot of information that was provided by Kirsten, who is very involved in this particular arena, and it was sent over to our law department. And I'm thinking there is somebody here from our law department who might be able to speak to us about how far they may have gotten. It seemed quite comprehensive in this review. But I guess, interestingly enough, and our Planning Board did follow up with us and let us know that they really couldn't weigh in on it, because the science around the health impacts of the 5G is really new and not developed. So they will not be offering a recommendation in this regard. And so we are, depending on our department, to take a look. I'm sorry, was somebody trying to be recognized?
You said from the, sorry, Chair Vakin, you said that the Planning Board couldn't weigh in, and I think...
No, I meant to mean the Board of Health. I'm sorry. I misspoke. Thank you.
Thank you, just wanted to clarify.
Yes, that was a slip. Board of Health. So is there anybody from our law department who can weigh in on this? Attorney Mantuleski?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So I did take a look at a lot of that documentation, and I did have some communication with some other professionals that have been involved in drafting these type of ordinance for various communities. And I actually found a couple of examples, one specifically from Chicopee, that I thought was really good. So I think that, while I appreciate all the work that, you know, members of the public put in and how much involvement they have, I do think that the draft can be somewhat simplified. And I think that Chicopee sample ordinance was a really good place to start. And I think that that may be something that the city would like to take a look at and maybe follow in their footsteps.
Okay, well, is that something that can be shared with us, like, next week, and people can look it over and compare it to the other information we've been provided?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, that's helpful. Committee members or board, Planning Board? Kate?
Yeah, I just wanted to say also, we had gotten a communication from John Zworko, who said, and I think Attorney Mantuleski had affirmed this, that as far as they know, the state of the law at this point is that we really don't have the ability to regulate to the extent of trying to ban or limit this, that, just as we found out that you couldn't, the federal government is saying we can't make health-related arguments about it. If we wanted to, we wouldn't be able to do that, that as far as HG&E knows, we don't have, as a municipality, the ability to ban them at all, even if we wanted to. And that that would open us up to a substantial amount of legal jeopardy. But that without, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't have a regulation, because the regulation is what we need in order to provide guidance for where it's possible. So that then leads to Attorney Mantuleski's suggestion that we look at the Chicopee ordinance as a possible model.
Right, and this is very much a generalization on my part, but in all of the information that we were provided, it seems that there is the idea that there could be certain distances and certain guidances set in. I find it a little bit stunning that the federal government would say we can't address health issues relative to something that may have health issues. That's pretty stunning, but I have read the same thing, so I'm aware of that limitation that we have. But to the extent that we could include things that give consideration to dense neighborhoods and things of that sort, it would be interesting to see what might be out there. So, yeah, but I guess it would be helpful to look at a final product, perhaps in a neighboring community that's being mentioned. Are there any other committee members that have a question or a comment?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes, so if I'm hearing correctly, apparently it sounds like they want us to regulate something that we technically can't regulate.
Well, we can establish some local regulations, but we can't regulate in certain arenas.
It sounds, well, I mean, and I'm not trying to, like, dispute or nothing, but it sounds like they want us to create a policy because they want us to have a policy, but not to actually have any teeth within the policy. It kind of feels like...
That might be one way of...
That's kind of how it feels like in reality, like, we have a policy, because if not, then anybody could do whatever they want to do. But in reality, we can't enforce anything that we feel would help or, like, mitigate the situation, at least for the people that are concerned about the health disparities or whatever.
Yes, that's what I'm understanding.
I don't know, whatever.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands or, at the moment, is any...
Yeah, does anyone else from the Planning Board have something they'd like to say? Or from the public to the Planning Board? Yeah, I think we're in an unfortunate situation where we're being told how limited our scope of authority is here. But I do think we need to take up what limited scope of authority we have so that we can regulate those few things that we can regulate.
Yes, for the local perspective, at least. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody from the public either, so final request for any public comments in the public hearing.
Counselor Rivera's hand is up again.
Counselor Rivera?
So just to be clear, what can we regulate?
So we have a sample ordinance that Attorney Mantuleski has suggested that we review that's been adopted by Chicopee, that, so she's said she could provide it to us so we could look it over between now and the next meeting, and then see if we feel it would be applicable to us here in Holyoke, and whether we could work from that as a base. So that was the suggestion made, so my suggestion would be that we take her up on providing that and continue the public hearing and see where we land once everybody has a chance to review it. And I'm not sure if you were already in on the Zoom or not, but we continued a different public hearing to January 23rd, because for City Council, we won't be taking anything up until there's a new committee next year, you know, after our meeting December 12th. So my suggestion would be that we get the information and continue this hearing to the same date, so they'll be all together, depending how that all shakes out.
Yeah, that works.
I see someone's hand up in council chambers, or that account has its hand up.
I see it too. Whoever's in council chambers wishes... Whoever's in council chambers wishes to be recognized?
Oh, thank you. This is Nathan from the planning board. I think Attorney Mantuleski's Chicopee ordinance will make it clear, but I feel like probably height and aesthetics are some elements that could be regulated with that much trouble from a zoning perspective. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so I'd like to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to January 23, 2024. And I guess we have to say 6:30, I'm not sure we did on the other ones, but let's stipulate.
I'm sure.
Yes, Counsel Givner?
Just a little more clarity on my end. We're extending the public hearing to, in an effort to get information from what Chicopee's doing on this, is that correct?
So Attorney Mantuleski will provide that to the committee between now and the next meeting.
Gotcha. All right, thanks. Then I would entertain that motion to continue the public hearing to, what was the date?
January 23, 2024 at 6:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So this public hearing is continued to January 23, 2024 at 6:30.
Just in terms of the planning board's continuation, Attorney Bacon, I'm wondering whether you think it makes sense for us to try to do any Chair Bacon, if it
In B2?
It's late. Yes, does it make sense for the planning board to try to start adapting the Chicopee ordinance to places where we think it would be helpful to adapt it for Holyoke? Or would you like to us to hold off and we'll all look at it together in January?
Well, I think it's fine if you have the time and the flexibility in your schedule to take a little deeper look at it before ordinance takes it up again. I think that would be helpful.
All right. My board and maybe also Sharon, I'm looking at our schedule and I'm thinking that our next meeting in December, we might have time to deal with it. We have some things on, but none of them, they might not be huge. So I might suggest that we continue to December 12 on our own. Do we have to continue also to the January date at this time or can we add that on once we meet in December?
We can add that on once we meet in December.
Okay, I guess I would propose that we continue our public hearing, our part of the public hearing on wireless telecom to December 12 so that we can start doing, see if there's some work we can start doing. Can I have a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion that for the December 12, continue for the facility.
Great, thank you. And just to clarify, that'll be at 5:30.
Yep.
Can I have a second?
A second.
By roll call vote, Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Nathan?
Yes.
Bernander?
Yes.
And Kate?
Yes. All right, and the one other item that I have on our agenda, our shared agenda, is the zoning ordinance, section 6.4.2 exemptions to the banners and signs ordinance. Is that what you see, Counsel Bacon? Can I have a motion to reopen that public hearing?
Good move.
Second.
By roll call vote, Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Nathan?
Yes.
Bernander?
Yes.
And Kate?
Yes.
Ordinance Committee, I'd like to entertain a motion to take up item three and reopen the public hearing.
Motion to take up item three, reopen the public hearing.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing filed by Counselor McGee ordered that the zoning ordinance, section 6.4.2 exemptions be amended to add a letter K. Banners or signs associated with a civic or municipal program may be allowed in all districts. Community or commercial sponsorship may be displayed on said banner or sign, provided that the banner or sign itself is not to be greater than six square feet. These installations must be approved by the city and by the Department of Public Works as applicable. And this is continued from our last joint hearing of 10/24/23. We have been provided with a draft legal form, which seems to have modified a little bit. In our past discussions in the public hearings, we were talking about more specificity about who would approve it and the like, but it's come back to us now as an adopt a spot signage program. Does everybody in the planning board have this language as well?
We did receive it today by email.
Okay. Okay, so I'll defer to any questions or discussion by the committee, but the only hesitation I have is we're creating an ordinance for a program that doesn't exist yet. And so I'd be more inclined to table it till we know what the program is. Because it seems to not be developed and fleshed out at this point. But I'm seeing Attorney Mantuleski would like to weigh in. If that's okay with planning, well, I'll recognize her. Okay. Attorney Mantuleski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So yeah, that was essentially, essentially exactly what I was doing too when I was trying to draft this because I knew that the purpose really was from OPED for an adopt a spot program.
Okay.
And for signs. And I know I had listened to the meeting where this was discussed a while ago and concerned by Counsel Rivera regarding, you know, banners at the baseball games and things like that. And obviously, that's not what we're trying to, or that's not what is being attempted here. So that, but that was exactly where I was going with it too. I was, I was wrestling with the language for a while because, and that's why I kind of put in that language that said the program regulations and guidance will be issued by OPED because there's not really a program yet. So I agree with you. I'm not really sure. I understand the purpose and I understand that this is something that would be good for the city for its vacant lots. But without the program being, you know, rolled out yet, I'm not sure. It's kind of cart before the horse situation.
Right. Okay, thank you. Any committee members? Oh, Counsel Rivera?
Yeah, just to speak on the, the, the baseball piece. So for me, it was just like, because now they can do it or they have been at, at the field, at the, at the baseball diamond, I think the blue spots, the blue socks specifically. And then I think Little League Baseball does it over by Dean Tech at the little field that they have over there. So whatever it is that we do, I just don't want it to, to prevent them from continuing to do what they do, right? As to that. That's what it was for me. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard on this? So what is the wish of the committee? I think we could close our public hearing and table this till there actually is a program. And while we need to wait for a recommendation from planning as well. So what is the wish of Kate Crockmire?
Yeah, I have a question and maybe Attorney Mantuleski can weigh in on this. I understand the logic of the specificity of adopt a spot, but I'm also a little worried that if we're, if we're creating this subsection of the exemptions for this one program, what happens if somebody else comes up with a similar program? Do, then we have to revise this whole ordinance. I actually leaving it open to any municipal program gave more flexibility. And it's unclear to me what's the right direction to go with that. This, it's a surprise, it was a surprise to me this afternoon to see it written so specifically.
Right, I think, you know, I was trying to limit it because I didn't want it honestly to be too overreaching. Because I know the intent behind it from OPED was for an adopt a lot situation. So that is why I did limit it. And I, I would honestly, I did take, to heart, you know, what Counsel Rivera said, you know, that the, we don't want to have an effect unintentionally on other things that the city is already doing. And that makes me nervous. So that was why I was trying to be as specific as I was. And honestly, I sat on this, I sat with this for a good, you know, not continuously, but for like six hours, like thinking about it being like, what, what is the best way here? And I can honestly say I don't feel 100% with what I, with what I put down here because there is no program, right, right, for the adopt a spot. So I really was kind of putting it out there for at least some discussion between the planning board and the ordinance committee to see what else you all maybe thought could work here because I was struggling too.
Is there, is there a way to write into it, the ability to include future municipal programs into the existing permission?
I think what I, I get what you're saying, but like, what, what kind of example would I have for that? You know, like what, what else could we think about? Because I guess I'm, I'm more of a visual learner, right? And that's why I tried to, I know, picture it kind of in my head.
If I may, I have one, I'm sorry.
Excellent, thank you.
I think a good example would be if the Parks Department started renting space at Springdale Park to, to people to put signs up and it would be the similar thing, but it wouldn't be under the guise of OPED. So the Parks Department would be able to take advantage of the same type of programming, but apply it within their own budget to then maybe get funds to fund whatever other programming they would like to do within their programs. You know what I mean? In a sense, so I, I think, and, and it could be the same for Neokah because she does the Adopt a Island program too as well. So there, there are a variety of other departments that could probably capitalize the same way that the planning department is planning on doing it. They're just ahead of the game right now, I would say.
So if I could weigh in here, I would just like to remind all of us that this is coming under a portion of an ordinance as an exemption. So I really think we have to keep it narrow, but if we want to make it broader, then I think we're kind of back to my earlier comment where we need to take a broader look at the whole sign ordinance again, which is a big, big task. But this is really under a list of exemptions, which is getting rather long. And if we make it too complicated, it will just get really messy, I'm afraid. But that's my perspective on it. It's just an exemption to an existing ordinance. So I don't know how broad you can go with that, but.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Counsel Rivera?
Yeah, if, if, if we're making that exemption for, for OPED, I think we could just make that same exemption for whatever department had that is trying to do the same thing. So we don't necessarily have to recreate it for everyone and, and create different policies for everyone. It could be the same policy or the same system. It's just that allowing it to be applied and other departments, the only thing is, is who's going to approve that?
Well, right, and that, that's the other part of the discussion because then it's getting broad again and this is narrow. But I take your point. So what is the will of the body? We had it make an exemption. We have draft language, but we have some other considerations to be taken about how broad or narrow it should be. I mean, I guess we can keep it open and find out what other intentions and desires may be from the city departments and the mayor, but usually it's the mayor or DPW or that, you know. There has to be some central point where things can either happen or they can't, right? But
Does anyone?
But by the will of the committee.
Madam Chair?
Counsel Givner?
I don't, I mean, I don't feel strongly about this, but if, if this is the appropriate exemption and then we can apply it to, you know, a department citywide, then I don't see a problem with accepting this language and adding that stipulation. That would just be my thoughts on this. I don't really I don't
Yeah.
I, I don't see what, what needs to be changed so much that we need to table it again.
So, so just to remind all of us about process, so at this point, we're in a joint public hearing. We can choose to close it feeling that we have enough information and wait for the recommendation from the planning board, which may be somewhat different from what we have before us, which is fine if it is, because all these various things have been brought up in the public hearing so they can be considered. So we can close our public hearing if everybody feels they have enough information and then wait for the planning board's recommendation and take it up once we have it. We can do that or we can keep it open.
Sounds reasonable. I mean, we've, we've had this public hearing, what, four times now?
I know, I know.
So I think I would, I would make a motion that we close the public hearing and, you know, make our decisions based on the findings of the planning board whenever we next meet.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to close our public hearing. It's been seconded. All in favor and I'll do roll call. Bacon, yes. Givner?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
Jordane? Jordane?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so our public hearing is closed on a 5-0 vote and we will await recommendation from the planning board. And thank you to the planning board for our joint meeting. I think we've now covered
Well, we need to, we need to wrap up here.
Yes, yes, sorry.
But Jane has her hand up.
Kate?
Yeah.
Attorney Mantuleski?
I was just, thank you, Madam Chair. I was just going to say that I will try, just considering what we talked about today and applying it maybe to other types of similar programs, I'm going to try to rework the language. And Kate, hopefully I will have that to you in advance of the December 12 meeting. So maybe we could put it on for something like that to have further discussion and get to a better place.
That sounds good. Does anybody else on the planning board have anything they would like to say more about that? And anyone from the public? I don't see any hands.
Thank you for covering me on the public comment, Kate.
All right, somebody, somebody will remember. So Jane, is your hand still up because you want to say something more? No, okay. Can I get a motion from the planning board for us to continue our public hearing to December 12 or we'll take up more language from Attorney Mantuleski?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
By roll call vote, Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Nathan?
Yes.
Bernander?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes. So I believe that concludes our joint business, is that correct?
Yes, and thank you to everyone. And since we will not be meeting jointly until a reconfiguration in the new year for City Council, I wish you all happy holidays and a happy new year.
To you as well. So we will all be
You too.
And Planning Board will reconvene on our meeting channel.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counsel Bacon.
I'll try to be quick.
Thank you, Mr. Jung.
Okay. We're ready to, for a motion to take up item five?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye. Item five, ordered that the City Council amend ordinance 2-336A and B to reflect a streamlined process for disposition of tax title properties and other properties not needed by the city for municipal purposes and to add a new section for the creation of an a butterlots sale program. of an abutter lots sale program. So we have taken this up a number of times, and it was last tabled on nine twenty-three. We've been looking at it since June. We had draft language in front of us at the last meeting, and we had asked legal to share with us the current ordinance language around the disposal of foreclosed tax title property not eligible for a butter lots program, because we didn't have the original language. We only had the new language. But do you folks have a copy in front of you? Because the copy that I have in front of me is from the last meeting. And Attorney Mantaleski, I see your hand up, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did provide the legal form, which does include the language of the current language and then the language of the proposed revision. I'm not sure if.
I, I looked through and printed out like five different things, but I didn't see that one. Was it under a separate cover that I might have missed?
I'm not sure. I did, maybe Jeffrey can, can speak to that as to where it would be.
All right, all right. I thought I captured everything, but apparently I didn't capture that one. Can you run through with us that section where the questions arose?
Essentially, so under, of the new section or what you have currently?
Under the section, under the authority of the tax title custodian, it is section C, disposal of foreclosed tax title properties not eligible for a butter lots program. Because we understood that all the abutters lots language was new.
Right.
Right. So if you don't mind, just clarifying what the differences are under C from the old language to the new language, in case committee members haven't had a chance to read it all.
Oh, yeah, I'm just going to get it to it in the document.
Let me ask you a quick question. Is there a red line version? Or, because I, I read the proposed legal form, but it's pretty long, but I don't think you're actually changing all that. You're only changing, or are you changing all that? Or was it just certain sections? Because I just want to make sure I'm focused on the changes.
Right. And that's, and I had written my note next to that section specifically that we had asked what the current language was.
So there's your current language, and then that first, so section, Counsel Jordane, do you have the legal form? You said you did? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So under section one, right, of the legal form, I have the entire section, the current existing two dash thirty, three thirty-six A. And so essentially what we're doing, or what this ordinance is proposing to do, is remove that section two thirty-six A, which is just, or disposition or acquisition, so just disposition, nothing with respect to acquisition, just disposition is changing, and taking that and inserting this new language under two three three six A. So I mean, it is, it is, you know, it is a lot, because you're essentially changing that entire, really how you're disposing of properties. And I think one of the main purposes behind where, in discussion with the treasurer and OPED, is just one, first with respect to foreclosed properties, we're just holding up tax, for via tax title, we're just holding on to them way too long when they can be being moved out via either an abutter sale, so only to be abutters around that parcel, or to just have it up, go up for auction within a pretty short period of time. So the first concern was just moving those properties and getting them back to income producing, right? And having some taxes come in on them, because they're not making the city any money while the city owns it, and the city has, you know, potential liability on those lots if something were to happen to someone on them. So it's really starting to get those moving. And then secondly, from an OPED perspective, it was really removing the need to come in and get a surplus order, because that can take an extensive period of time. So what essentially this new ordinance would be doing is making it that any properties that come to the city via tax title are dealt with in a timely and efficient manner.
So is, is section A to, let me see, I want to make sure I give the correct citation. A to B, is that being changed?
Of your current two thirty, two three three six?
Yeah, two, it would be.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Okay. So explain to me, so just so we're all reading this correctly, it currently reads, when on recommendation of the mayor, the City Council declares by a two-thirds vote that a parcel of real property other than park property is available for disposition. On such lawful terms and restrictions as are in the best interest of the city, the mayor shall direct the chief procurement officer and the city solicitor, let's see, goes on to the next page, to rent, convey, or otherwise dispose of the real property in a manner consistent with Massachusetts law. And then there's section C about when a majority vote would be required. How, how is that changed?
It's essentially taking that and moving up the process. So when there is a property that is not tax title, right, that the city has obtained some other way, via gift or otherwise, then the purchasing department essentially will notify the mayor, City Council, all other city departments, that we have a property that we've been gifted. And they have to do that within 15 calendar days of receipt of notification that we were gifted this property, or the city obtained this property in some way, that we have been given it. And then, similar to the tax title, the council, mayor, the various other departments are going to have 30 days essentially to look at it, from the date, I want to make that clear, 30 days from which the communication appears on the council agenda, to say whether or not the city sees a need for that property. And if the city does see a need for that property, then we will let the, that department can, and, you know, in a city council hearing, can discuss that and see if that would work for that exact municipal need. But if not, if there's no departments that say that there's a municipal need, and the city council doesn't see a municipal need, the mayor doesn't see a municipal need, then it can go out via RFP to just get rid of the property at that point in time. Via that normal 30-day process.
Right. So this removes the council's two-thirds approval vote.
I think that you, in the end, when a purchase and sale and when the RFP comes back to you, I think you're going to have to approve it anyway. But this essentially takes, and it removes the need to have a delay in getting a property declared a surplus. And so it can just get things kind of moving.
Yeah. Yeah. That's extremely problematic. I mean, I'm, I'm on board for the spirit of what I thought this was doing, which was to give abutters an opportunity to get, get access to lots that abut their property. That's the billing of this proposed ordinance. This appears like we're doing that for any type of form of city property. By removing this ordinance, you're wholesale removing our authority to have a two-thirds vote to determine city property available for disposition, because the lower threshold later is only a majority vote. And that would apply whether it's an abutter or a non-abutter piece of property. And, and then my third concern is, the council does not operate as a multi-member body who meets twice a month. There's no way we can turn stuff around on city property being issued in 30 days. It doesn't work like that with us. I mean, we, we send things to a committee, we would have to have a hearing, is this something in your file? You know, this is the way the body works. I mean, there's no way we could come to a final conclusion of, of determination to do our due diligence in 30 days anyways, even if we were so inclined. But why don't we just pick to create, you know, some sort of expediated process, or give rights of first option to abutters of pieces of property without these wholesale changes in our rules? I mean.
If I may, I, I think.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, I think you have, I, I understand what you're saying, and I understand that it is hard to, you know, think about it the way you, you have put it, that you're losing, the council's losing this control over disposition. But you have to remember where those properties, for the most part, are coming from. They weren't, they weren't the city's to begin with, they were someone else's, and we got them because they didn't pay their taxes. So we, do we necessarily feel like we want the single-family home on Brown Ave in the city's portfolio for a municipal purpose? That's doubtful. So it's about getting that movement, because there are some properties. There's a property on Old Rock Valley that's been sitting there for, I don't know, 10 years that the city has had it, just because it didn't move and nothing happened with it. So instead of having those properties continue to pile up and have the city, I mean, think about the tax revenue that could be coming in from getting rid of some of these properties. I mean, so I think that we have to remember what really the portfolio of these properties are. And the idea behind even enmashing our laws with respect to tax title properties is that they go to auction. So I think that we're trying to get back to that spirit as to what should actually be happening with the bulk of the, the properties that the city is holding. You know, and so I guess I would say, if the City Council is concerned with respect to other, other property that's given to the city, then maybe we can do this in kind of a twofold, at least as to tax title property, maybe giving this, this a chance to get this moving for those types of properties. I just, I know that there is a desire and a want for the city to move these properties, get them back to income producing, and have that done, done in a timely and efficient manner. So I, I guess that's, that's my response.
So I see Counsel Givner wants to be recognized, and I just want to make a brief comment, Coco, and I'll recognize you quickly. I guess, I hear what you're saying. I guess I haven't seen the City Council be the one that slowed down disposing of the properties. I think the delay has been them getting to the council. I haven't seen those disposition votes take a really long time. So it seems like some of the processes are internal, maybe more than structural or, or political, if you will, but.
No, and I think it's, I think it's kind of a, it's not, it's not just one department or the other. I think it's kind of, and this ordinance isn't directed towards the City Council directly. It's really to get all the departments, including treasurer and OPED, and any, any department really, to say, okay, figure it out. Like, we're not going to sit on this property for.
Right.
Years, right? Like, we need to move on it. So it's essentially dealing with that. Yeah.
Counsel Givner?
Hold on, Counsel Vacan, I, we're still on the floor, wanted to make another point.
Oh, I thought you were all set. Counselordane?
Nope, not all set. Attorney Mantaleski was great. She, she helped me answer my, my questions and my point, but I wanted to just make another commentary that, you know, it isn't just available for disposition, it isn't just acquired property through tax title, right? It could be property that's been in our portfolio forever, that's been city property. That, that also is votes that we take. You know, it could be any sundry of things, an old school that we've had for 75 years, and we decide we'd want to declare it surplus and available for disposition. Those can sometimes be very contentious votes, potentially, because citizen stakeholders have a lot of decision-making process and a lot of thoughts about how city property is handled, and they count on their elected representatives, which is why we have this authority, to be able to protect the prevailing interest of the community and the citizen stakeholders. So I, you know, that's not something, it's just like snapping our fingers and getting these things through. By the way, I mean, rare, it's pretty rare the City Council ever votes anything down. I think you just made that point, Counsel Vacan. I can't even remember the last time we took a vote on a single-family house to come in through as available for disposition, by the way. If there's some house out in Rock Valley that's sitting there for 10 years, bring it in, because I'm sure somebody would love to buy that house. That's certainly not us holding it up. I could probably count on one hand the number of votes of single-family homes in my 30 years here that have come in for available for disposition. So usually what these are is, it's a, it's, they're abandoned lots, you know, from an apartment block we had to tear down. It's something like that. Or it's these little parcels that people didn't pay their taxes on, and we turn them around. And I thought the spirit of this, or at least the way this ordinance is being advertised, is that this is about helping abutters, so that we're giving abutters an opportunity to buy these properties next door to them, and giving them the first shot at those. By all means, I mean, I'm totally on board for that. What I'm not on board for is it comes in as that, but what it turns into is this, which is, you know, totally revamping the available for disposition vote, taking that authority away from the council, our two-thirds authority, turn these things around like we're just firing things out with city property. Again, this is not, you know, this all, again, here we go again. This comes down to the role of this city council as not viewed as a protection for the public, as their citizens. We sit, the 13 of us, in the place of the 40,000, because we can't fit them all, 40,000 in the room, okay? So they elect us through a representative democracy to represent them. And so we're here in their place as if they were disposing the property in what is the best interest. And these, it isn't like there's things being logjammed in city council, there's all these wonderful deals that are out there, and we're holding them up. That never happens. Never happens. I can't even remember the last time we buried something on an available for disposition. It just never happens. And then number two is, we're here to look out so that when somebody says, oh, you want to make that available, well, I don't want that being sold, I want the city to hold that. And abutters say, I want that as common property. All these protections are in place to protect residents, okay? Those things I safeguard with a kung fu grip. And here's another, here's another example. If we want to help abutters. If we want to help the butters, by all means, let's do that. But let's be careful as we're writing these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Givner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this has come before us for, three times now. This will be the fourth time um, we have language. The maker of the order has, has been here and talked about the order and its intentions. Um, and I definitely see this as a way to speed up a process by putting out notifications quicker and turning over property quicker. I think, I think a good um, one detail that I, I, I can respect is that a lot of these properties have come into the city's ownership um, because they didn't pay their taxes. It's not like, it's not like it's some old city property that we're just giving away. So um, I don't see a problem with the, with the legal form as it's written. Um, it's been looked at by the maker, I'm pretty sure, who came before us um, last time, hoping to, to discuss it. Um, it's been discussed a couple of times. So my motion would be just to accept this legal language and send it to full council for a vote, um, and let the body decide how they feel about it.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the committee that wishes to be heard? I'm not seeing hands.
Uh, if it was a motion, I second. If there's not a motion, then I stay quiet.
Okay.
What's the motion?
So um, she, she did, she did make a motion. And if you're seconding the motion, then we can discuss under the motion. And this is what I would like to add to the discussion. The last time we discussed this language, we were concerned about what changes were being made. Because you may recall, we just went through a lot of things where we had to put language back in because we didn't realize it was out. And that's what happens when we're not looking at redlined version, seeing what was the original language and what is the new language that is no longer there, you know, what's absent. And so at the last meeting, we had asked for a redlined version so we could see what was the original language, what is removed, what is additional and new. And we were given clarification that the abutter language was new. So that was all good. But there were specific questions, as we're talking about tonight, about properties that weren't eligible for the abutter lots program. And it appeared that there were a lot of changes in there. So I really think we should be looking at the ordinance as a whole, what is being changed? And I know there's um, in the legal form that you're looking at, which I still have not been able to find on my email for some reason, um, that it's showing you what language was there and what language is taken out. But it's much easier and cleaner to look at a redlined version. Because this is where we've gotten in trouble. We've had to fix like three or four ordinances when we change them in this way. So I really like to see the detail. So we really know exactly what we're voting on. But that's me.
That's understandable. I mean, if, if, if that makes sense, then, then I, I definitely agree that it'd be easier to see this all with the redline version together. Um, so if that's the will of this group, then I'm all for it.
All right, thank you. Uh, Attorney Mantuleski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I totally understand. I, I'm, I feel the same way about redlines. Um, I love to see them because then I'm like, oh, okay, like, where have we changed? But I will tell you that it was near impossible for you to actually, you would just see a bunch of redlines. And then you would see a whole new paragraph because it is substantially different. So um, I don't think a redline would have been helpful, quite honestly, because it would have just been like, okay, this is gone and now this is what it is. Um, but I, I'm, I'm the same. I love redlines. Um, so I don't think that would have been, you know, necessarily helpful. And I do think, um, you know, I don't think the intent, again, behind this is to dispose of those like old historic properties that the city has held for 70 years. Um, and so, and, and much like the um, the signage ordinance, you know, I want to make sure the intent is clear, um, because I don't want to have, again, an unintentional thing happen, um, when that wasn't intended. Um, so if we need to, again, if we want to limit it simply to properties that are um, the, the city takes via tax title, I think that would be um, a great starting point. Um, if we just want to take that part of it. Um, I think OPEC and Treasurer would be happy with that.
Point me to the language that you'd be changing to do that.
So essentially, you have in the new, in the new ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, I thought I might have just lost you. Um, you're going to under, right after the definition section.
Yeah.
There is a section that says um, foreclosed tax title property, right? So that section, so you'll have little subsection A, which is as to the abutters lots program. And then you have B, pro- foreclosed tax title property not eligible for a butters lots program, because the butters lots program is limited to smaller lots, um, smaller, more vacant, or smaller vacant lots.
Right, and that was that section C that talks about disposal of foreclosed tax title property, not eligible for a butter lots.
Right, so that'll be like your single-family home or other property that just isn't eligible for, under that um, the abutter lot. So if we wanted to essentially do the ordinance up to subsection three, which says other city-owned properties, if the city council is not ready or prepared um, or comfortable with having that language put in, so that's property that the city has or has acquired via some other way, not tax title, then again, I think that um, at this point, you know, OPEC and um, the treasurer would be happy with that. So that'll, again, help with the intent of about getting some of these properties that we've acquired and we're just holding on to that we don't need um, off of our um, books and then onto an income-producing stream.
Right, but where in this language was the two-thirds vote that is now not there?
I think the um, what you're gonna be having it, what you're going to be having essentially with the foreclosed properties, is you're gonna have them be going via auction as opposed to having them go through like an RFP.
Uh, what?
Yeah, so either it would be in a butters lots um, transfer. And usually there's very limited people, so it'll be like one or two or three people. Um, and there'll be a butters lots auction essentially. Um, and then if that, if it's not eligible for a butters lots, then it'll be a regular auction for tax title properties. So that's why we give the um, departments, um, you know, that time period, which I think will probably work out between, you know, 45 and 60 days, um, depending on when it gets placed on an agenda.
But are, are these the properties that we've been voting on to dispose of in this section that not eligible for the abutter lots?
Well, it depends. So some of them, for example, like 267 Elm would have been, that was a recent one. That would have not been a butters lots, it's too big. Um, so that would have been.
So that would come to council?
No, that would have been disposed um, via auction, just not in a butters lots auction. So, but then the other ones, like some of them on Main Street, like 277 Main Street, which I think is maybe coming down on the council at some point in time soon, is very small, you can't build on it. Um, so that one would have been more eligible for the butters lots and that would have went to just that small. So you're thinking it, if you want to think of it this way, you have two, um, there's tax title up here, right, properties that the city gets in. And then you have ones that are eligible for the butters lots that are small, um, have very little value, um, aren't usually buildable lots. Um, and then you have the others that are, that have more of a higher value, that are buildable lots. So this one would go.
So what I want to understand is the ones that are, that have higher value.
Yes.
How many of those come to city council now?
Um, it really depends, I guess, when we're, how fast the departments are moving on um, getting them to surplus.
I mean, given the nature of the property, not the timing, but given the nature of what the property is, do they eventually come to city council, given what they are?
Well, all of them come to city council at this point.
Well, so what I'm trying to get to is if, it seems like the committee is very warm and it seems like we have a consensus about the butter lots and the language relative to those. It seems where we're stuck is taking away the two-thirds vote of the city council on the properties that do come to the council.
Well, all of the properties come to the council right now.
Right, right, but it would be for the majority vote of the sale rather than for the two-thirds vote of the approving for disposition, if I'm reading and understanding this correctly. And I think.
So I think that, you know, I'm sorry.
I think, so I think what we're trying to say to you is leave that part in instead of eliminating it.
Right, but so are we, are we talking about tax title properties as well? You want that in?
Whatever.
Because for example, we have one right now that we just got um, within the last few months, that was, it's 432 Brown Ave.
Yeah.
And that one, I believe, is a single-family home.
Yeah.
So that one, under two prongs, right? That would have been one of the higher value. So you still, is the will of the, the council and the community that you still want to have the two-thirds vote over that? Or do you want to see that go to auction?
What would happen right now, the way the ordinance is?
It would come to um, city council for a declaration of surplus to get rid of it. And then we would take it and RFP it.
Yeah. Um, my sense is that I think we'd like to walk before we're running. And this is, I'm just speaking for myself right now, I'm one vote of five on the committee. I think if we move forward with the abutter lot language and we free up all that little stuff, if you will, which is, still can be very important, and we leave the other thing the way it is for now and start moving some of the stuff and we get to feel how everything is moving, then I think there might be more warmth for taking out certain steps maybe later on.
Um, any, any movement is progress, right? Quite honestly, just to be getting those out.
You know, and, and I do see, you know, where it says to reflect a streamlined process for the disposition of tax title properties and other properties not needed, um, and the new section for the creation. So my recommendation would be, and I, and there's others that will certainly speak after me, would be that we keep in the two-thirds vote on the disposition. We embrace the abutters lot language then, which would not be the two-thirds vote, right, on those, right? If we add that language, if I'm understanding it correctly?
Okay, so that would be the, the lots not eligible for a butters sales. You'd want to still have that two-thirds.
If they're not eligible for a butters.
Right, okay.
Yeah, but um, other committee members, um, members of the council that are present um, can certainly weigh in. I see Counsel Puelo's hand. Counsel Puelo?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just looking for clarification. So it sounds like the way, it sounds like the way we want to do this is we want to change it from having a normal RFP process to having an auction. And so we want to say if we have the auction, at the end of the auction, the council doesn't need to approve the sale pending whatever the price of that auction was, right?
Right, so you wouldn't have that, that step would not be there because it would just be via the auction.
It would be gone. It would be sold.
So it would be sold. So I, I'm thinking, so I, I, I'm tracking. I think that's the major difference. And I, I guess I just agree with all the other speakers that are saying, you know, I, I'd be fine with an auction process, but I think that the council still has to approve whatever that sale would be, it would be contingent on council approval. So I think that would be a good in-between. If you want to have your auction, you can, but it still needs to be ratified by the council, so that way some people aren't being smart with some auction prices and sales. And I'm not saying that would happen, but, you know, who knows? Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the committee, if I can't see you, let me know if you want to address this. Uh, Counsel Jordane?
Yes.
You're fading in and out a little with your sound.
What about now?
Not good.
Well, now? Better?
You sound, kind of sound like you're in a cave or something, but. Give it a shot, we'll see if you can hear you.
First thing I would, I would say is we've had controversial ones, where we've had questions about the quote-unquote negotiated price. And we've had some come forward where, you know, they bought lots for $500 that were viewed to be worth a lot more than that. The council brings a layer of transparency to all of this as well, to make sure that these deals are inherently fair. So here we get to it. We're eliminating under this proposal our two-thirds approval on the front end. And then we would be having an auction and eliminating our majority vote on the back end. Both bad ideas, okay? Um, these powers exist. I think the council needs to continue to resist um, efforts to knock down the city council's authority in, as a co-equal branch of government. This is another example of a potential pitfall that we need to avoid. I'm supportive of giving preference to people who are abutters of lots. And, and the other thing is, this ordinance, it's chasing a problem that doesn't exist. There is no backlog, there is nothing to streamline, okay? At least as it relates to us, if they want to create a process where if they think RFP is too long and they want to have auction instead of uh, RFP, or they want to, I'm open to that, but the having, the, the mayor should be approving these things and, because it says in there on the recommendation of the mayor, then the council should be approving them. And we are allowed to also put conditions too, okay? Because we might also put in a condition that says, we don't want X to happen on this property because we're looking out for neighbors. You know, it shall only be used for a residential use or, you know, these type of things.
Okay, so.
All of this is, all of this is a bad idea. If we however want to streamline uh, for, for a butter properties to give a preference, all for that. Um, but we don't need to scrap all, all of our approval rules for this.
Okay, so what I'm hearing so far is a request to Attorney Mantuleski to revise the legal draft to put the approvals for disposition and approval of sales back in as it currently exists in this draft language. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel Rivera?
Uh, excuse the Elmo in the background, my daughters are here. Um, give me one second there. They're kind of crying. So I think uh, did we not, this is just under discussion under Counselor Givner's uh, motion to pass language as is, right? Just to be clear.
That, that is the motion that's before us.
So we still have to vote on that first, right? Before we do anything else?
No, we're, well, we're having, we're having discussion under it. I had indicated that I wanted to see the redline version. I'm being told it wouldn't be helpful, but it helps me to see what is being taken out, what is being added, what is new and what was there that's now gone, which is hard to do when you're not looking at them side by side.
So that, that prevents the vote on the motion that Givner put forward?
Well, all I'm saying is I perceive from Counsel Givner that if we were going to pursue and get that redline version, that she was open to waiting and doing that. She did not remove her motion at this time, the motion is still there. Attorney Mantuleski argued against providing the redline version, saying she doesn't think it would be helpful. So now under discussion. So now, under discussion of the motion to approve this legal language, we are having discussion, and there's at least two members of the committee that do not like the legal language draft, so we're not going to vote for it. So what I've been attempting to do is to see if, under this motion, we could then have an amendment to amend the legal form to come back to something that hopefully we could have more of a consensus on. That's-
No, I hear you, and I hear all of that, but I think that the first motion should go forward first, and if it doesn't go through, then we can do all the other things with regards to how we change it. Because I feel like it's kind of evolving into a different conversation, and before you know it, we'll be voting on something that was not the actual thing that I seconded. So I want to make sure that if we're voting on something, that it's what I seconded, because it, I'm not seconding something different.
Correct.
A new motion, and then we can-
There has, there has not been an amendment to the motion offered at this point.
Okay.
We are under discussion on the motion to approve the legal form that's before us. That's where we're at, one motion.
Thank you. So that was my first piece, right?
You're correct.
The, the, the second piece was, I, I hear a lot of the concerns, and I agree for the most part on a lot of the concerns with regards to like stripping the power from the council to have some say-so over some of the properties. But I also am not, I, I also kind of reserve some of my, my, um, give me one second. There you go. Uh, so I guess, I, I think that for properties that are, like, 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 kind of, I'm in agreement with where if certain properties are coming up that literally we just came up on as a community, um, we don't have the financial capacity to maintain a property for several years just because we say so. Um, just not too long ago, we were in a tax classification meeting, and everyone is screaming about overspending. That is technically overspending just because, just because we want to have power over certain properties. Like, if it's a property that has been in our property for a long time, if it's something that may be valuable, that makes sense, then I, then I understand that maybe it goes through the council and that we have that vote. But if there are other ones that are like literally just taking up time and wasting money and, and would make things more effective and efficient for city government overall, I think it would make sense. So if there is an amendment, I, I think for me, it would be maybe having a happy medium here, where some properties, yes, and some properties, they can go ahead and do their thing, because if we're having a property sitting there in our hands for 10 months, 15 months, then I don't know, 24 months, then before you know it, it becomes 32 months, 60 months. I don't care whose fault it is. It could be the council's fault, it could be the department head's fault. Doesn't matter whose fault it is, it still costs money. It still costs money. Someone has to cut the grass, someone has to maintain, someone has to put the liability in shins in case of the fact. So we don't have that money to like literally spend just because. So i- if we're going to be holding on to something because we want to have a say-so on it, it has to have a valid reason behind it. It can't just be just because we want to have a say-so. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Um, to be clear, the city council has not been holding on to properties once it's recommended to us to dispose of them. We have been moving them through DGR promptly. So that isn't, hasn't been a, uh, there hasn't been any holdup in that regard. It's just a matter of having a two-step process or no process that involves the council. Counselor Jordan?
Yes, I'll make a motion that-
You're fading out. You're very difficult to hear.
About now?
Still.
About now?
A little better.
I'll make the motion that the committee work with the law department to draft a more limited version that speaks to abuttered properties, which is what I thought was the whole point of this, that we would have, if there's something that came in as a tax title, a butter property that we could, you know, put that on some sort of streamlined fast track. Um, and I would give some deference to the law department to work with the department heads to propose a, a new process to us, but it's got to have a, a check in there that, at the beginning or the end. And they probably would want it at the end because then it's only a majority vote, but I'll let them consider that. And then, you know, we could consider that for that category of properties. My concern with this proposed ordinance is, it's every property. I mean, up to and including, I mean, literally city hall, it would appear, right?
Yes.
If, if, if we decided, well, you know, and, and as far as what's, what's a problem and what's not a problem, those are all factors that we consider when we take our votes, so that the, the stuff that's not controversial, the small deals, those go through. First of all, we can't have that many deals, so.
Can, can you, can you, can you just restate your amendment so it's clear what it is? Please?
That the, that the item get referred back to the law department to draft a more limited, uh, proposal relative to tax title of butter properties.
All right, I'll second that. Is there further discussion under this amended motion by any member of the committee? Or a member of the city council who's present? Not hearing anyone. So on the amendment to the motion, which is to send it back to legal to ask them to amend it, to keep the more valuable properties in the current form and to draft a more limited abuttered tax title that would be moving in this streamlined fashion, all in favor of that? Rivera?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado-Velez?
Yes.
Bacon? Yes. So that motion passes. So Attorney Mantuleski, we're sending this back to you so it can come to us in a little bit more narrow fashion. I think there's a pretty good consensus around the abuttered portion of this.
Okay.
All right?
Yep, I will do. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll entertain a motion on item six.
Take it off the table?
Second? All in favor? Aye. So item six, filed by Jonane Bacon, ordered that, ordinance two dash four two one, be amended to include all public hearings so that the public has an opportunity to truly participate in their government and the, and to advance transparency. This is another one we've been talking about forever. I think we finally have the legal form in front of us is the, uh, language that we received today with the blue writing, the most recent version. Um, Counselor Jordan, you're the maker of this?
Yes, it has the suggestions from the ordinance committee, including Counselor Maldonado-Velez, uh, who had some really good suggestions relative to, um, written correspondence to the chair for people that could not attend. So I think it's got it all in there.
So has everybody had a chance to look this over? If you have, I'll entertain a motion.
You want, you're ready for a motion?
Attorney, Attorney Mantuleski, is your hand up on this, or was it a leftover?
I'm not.
Okay, Attorney Mantuleski?
Um, I just wanted to, um, let the committee know that the Solicitor's Office has not approved this form, uh, because of the retirement board issue. Um, and I think that's been discussed by Attorney Dagnan, um, at this, the previous meetings. Um, so at this point, I believe the form you have in front of you is not, um, approved as the form by legal. So I just wanted to let the committee know that.
Okay, and, and so what I-
Madam Chair?
Hang on a second. What I would like, um, just to point out is that under nine H, we have rules under which the city Solicitor's Office can weigh in on the form and their opinion relative to it. But the language that the committee requests is within the rights of the committee to recommend for approval.
I understand.
Counselor Jordan?
Yes, and, and I, in fairness to Attorney Mantuleski and the law department, I know they would like us to remove, just so we're all crystal clear, retirement board what is in the current ordinance already.
Right.
They want us to remove it in this rewrite.
Right.
I don't feel comfortable doing that. I mean, at this point, the retirement board is ignoring it. Um, and they have been ignoring it for this many years. I just don't feel like, at this point, I want to go along with that and have it removed. Um, so I would like to keep the retirement board wording in there. I appreciate their opinion. I will say, the law department approved the retirement board for inclusion. Attorney Cunha specifically included it back when we wrote this, you know, 10 years ago, or whatever it was, and it's been in the current law all these years. But by way of full transparency, retirement board doesn't follow it. But other than that, um, I, I think we should just keep it in there for now and maybe, you know, we can figure it out together with the retirement board. I, I've made my case to them that, you know, they're having meetings at 9:00 AM and things are not, you know, they're wonderful people, they're doing a great job. But on the other hand, I really wish the meetings were a little more transparent about how big the dollars are, like video for the meetings, trying to maybe at least try to have some of the meetings in, in the after hours, um, you know, for, for more citizen participation, but, you know, that's food for another day.
Yes, yes, and I would add in as a co-fileer of this that we did not request any changes to the existing language, only that there be an expanded availability to the public in certain areas. So, um, I'm not seeing any other hands. Um, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that. Oh, we have a second. Um, all in favor? I'll go to Counselor Maldonado-Velez?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Givner?
Yes.
Counselor Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon? Yes. So that legal form is recommended to the city council five zero. So I'd like to take, um, entertain a motion to take up items seven through 10 as a package? If someone is so willing?
Someone.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, item seven, filed by Jordan McGiver-McGee. Ordered that the ordinance committee invite in the mayor, DPW superintendent to review chapter 74 of our ordinances on solid waste and how this reconciles with the proposed rollout of a new residential trash pickup program in light of our already existing laws in this area. It is requested that they review their proposal with us so we and citizens can understand it better. Item eight, filed by Counselor Bartley. That the DPW and the law department work with the ordinance committee to invoke some flexibility in the new trash bin program. For example, to allow single-family homes to apply for more than one 96-gallon bin, so long as the homeowner's request is reasonable and justified. Example two, to allow for the homeowner to swap out the 96-gallon bin for a smaller, more suitable trash bin. Item nine, with community, um, filed by Counselor Givner. With community support, order that our trash receptacle ordinance be updated to reflect the file. Update to ordinance, chapter 74, section two. Residential rubbish receptacles, 96-gallon rodent-proof, watertight residential rubbish receptacles are provided by the city. One receptacle is provided to each residential unit or household. Additional containers are not available and cannot be acquired. Lost or damaged containers must be purchased from the city, DPW, by residents at the current rate. A smaller receptacle may be available by request. Considerations are made on a case-by-case basis and depend on need as determined by the Disabilities Commissioner slash Senior Advocate slash Personal slash Health Advocate. Um, and three, should the number of containers necessary to contain all refuse at a given residential location exceed one 95, but 96-gallon receptacle on a weekly basis, the superintendent of public work shall have the right to require the property to utilize an alternate method, method of collection. Item 10, Counselor Givner. With community support, that order to increase trash can minimum to 50 gallons for municipal pickup services, our DPW accommodates piles of trash bags in lieu of required, and this was an old one from 1022, in lieu of required current 35-gallon size. This in an effort to increase can use participation in order to mitigate the health hazards of torn and rums through piled bags for pickup. I put this on because it all went together. Okay, so we have all these orders before us. I will note that I believe it's item nine, which is actually the one that is asking to update the ordinance. And I would also note that we have legal form provided to us. So has everybody had a chance to read the legal form?
Yes and no. I actually, maybe I missed that one. I did not see the legal form on that one.
Okay, um, it is there.
Okay.
I didn't see the other one, but I do have this one, and it should, um, it's actually amazingly brief.
What, Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor Givner?
So the order that I filed basically just took the current ordinance and, and substituted some information to, to reflect what we have now. And the legal form, um, seems to do the same, so. I'm just stating, it's not much different than the old ordinance, it just has a new size and language in it.
Well, the only thing is, so I've been in some other committees and I've been talking with residents, and a number of questions have come up because, and maybe it's just that it's chapter 74, section two, as opposed to another section that, you know, I'm not looking at the whole ordinance. But for example, if somebody wants to throw out a lamp or a broken chair, does it have to fit in the rubbish barrel? Because right now, people could throw that out, sticking out of their barrel. And so that's a question that's come up. If somebody needs two barrels, can they buy a second barrel? Why not? But apparently, at least in the ordinance language, it says you can't buy another one, and that you'd have to go to like a private trash pickup if you have more than one.
Well, that's kind of what the, the ordinance says now. It just reflects like the, the current size, um, trash bin. So, and another thing to keep in mind is that we are trying to encourage recycling and using the actual dump. Um, so, I mean, if you can't fit a lamppost in your trash can, you couldn't fit it before because this is a bigger trash can, and you probably should be taking it to the dump at some point.
So, and, um, I'm sure Attorney Mantuleski can weigh in on this too, because I'm just wondering where the, um, yard waste where before this proposed ordinance, people could put out up to 12 or 15 smaller barrels with yard waste. There's a lot of people who do their own yards.
The yard waste isn't affected by this part of the ordinance.
It isn't?
No.
All right, um, Counselor Rivera, I see your hand.
Uh, I think Counselor Givner has addressed some of the, the things that, that were, for me, concerns. Uh, so like, I think we, a reminder is that like, with the new program, um, the idea is to cut back on trash. The idea is to inspire people to recycle. And we're fortunate that it's a 96-gallon ba-, uh, barrel versus like Chickaby where they got a 35-gallon barrel, and they make you pay for trash bags. Um, I think for us, and I, I, it's unfortunate that the DPW director couldn't make it today because he, 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 I think he had oral surgery or surgery or something like that, so he was not able to be here. But, um, I had asked for- But, um, I had asked for the numbers of what it costs for us to get rid of trash, and what it costs for us for recycling. And I think that, um, ideally, in the future, it, again, we are a community that is overspending because that's what I keep hearing, right? For us, it's to reel that in, and the easiest parts to reel that in would be on trash and recycling. Um, so, many people may not like it, they may not, um, feel that it's okay, um, the, the change sucks sometimes, but at the end of the day, we are getting to a point where finances are at a capacity, and the easiest thing to cut back on would be helping us mitigate issues with regards to trash. This is not an unlimited amount of trash that you could just throw out. Uh, like, you cannot do that anymore when we're putting fifteen to twenty bags of trash outside your house. Um, you have a ninety-six dollar, uh, ninety-six gallon barrel, put as much as you can inside it. If you have a lamp, you should be bringing it downtown. Um, I'm sure that they'll still pick it up if you put it outside. If you don't put, if you put it outside, I'm sure someone else will pick it up. Um, one man's trash is another man's treasure, right? Um, but ideally, with the barrels and with the program, and I, I, I think someone else filed an order with having the trash, um, that program with PVPC or that partnership, uh, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, for them to come in and report and report out, um, what the plan is for the future. Hopefully, they can do that sooner than later, so that we can have a better understanding of where we're going in that direction. Because in other communities, this trash opportunity is, is an opportunity for them to fund their own departments. I, I don't want to add another quote-unquote hidden tax, but at the end of the day, um, if you're throwing out a, a significant amount of trash, come on, man, like, you shouldn't, the other taxpayers shouldn't have to pick up your burden at the end of the day when it comes to that. Um, but everyone will not agree. Um, this is why we are here, this is what democracy is for. So, um, I appreciate for, uh, the, um, Madam Chair for allowing me the space to talk and, uh, share my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess the other feedback I've gotten is from people who, they get it about the ninety-six gallon barrel, but when they go downtown to bring things down, half the time it's not open. So it's hard to know.
That's a good point.
And then, there's other people who can't do it. You know, there's a lot of single elders living alone that can't go down, load up their car and go down to the dump. So a question that was raised was, could there be a pass given to people that once a year or twice a year, they could go down, or they, or DPW could do a pickup at the house for the odds and ends that maybe don't fit in the trash barrel, but these aren't people that are putting out twenty bags of stuff. They're just people that once or twice a year, they gotta get rid of a broken chair, or this or that. Could that be worked into this ordinance? Is, um, feedback from citizens, so, yeah. Um, Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I think in respect to that, I've seen that in a lot of communities where there is like, one day, um, twice a year where, um, oversized trash and couches are picked up and air conditioners and everything you can possibly imagine. And, um, I've lived in communities where you actually have to call and make an appointment, so it's advertised that it's happening, and then you have to take advantage of it happening by, um, letting the DPW know that you're gonna set things out, because they don't just go all over the city picking up.
Right.
Um, so, I think that could be something added separately, it doesn't really have to do, have anything to do with this, and I think it would have a lot of support. Um, but again, it's an expense, so, um, my, I mean, homeowners get a dump card anyway, and you can dump, I don't know how many times a year, but you can dump a certain amount of times a year. Um, I have to go Saturday and take a bunch of stuff that's, you know, gathered in the basement and broken things, like an old air conditioner, et cetera. Um, I am able-bodied, so I will be doing that and renting a van to do it, but, to your point, if there could be a pickup, I think it's a great idea. We do have to think about the cost and the burden it puts on the DPW. And as far as the argument of their hours, I mean, that's a, probably a manpower thing, and as, they are odd hours, I would say, you know, for people who work, but they do have Saturday morning hours, and so I will be taking advantage of that. And I always call ahead to make sure there's no weird, um, holiday or something I don't know about, to make sure that they're gonna be open. So I think, um, any excuses we can find to not, um, be accountable for our refuse and start, um, taking apart and recycling our community, um, don't really fly with me, especially since I, you know, it's already been shown that we're saving thousands of dollars already just by doing more recycling already since the new, um, cans were put out. So I think we have to figure out ways to work together to help people understand that this is good for the community, it's working in communities, we don't have trash bags flying around the city. And as far as figuring out how to take care of extra trash, those are additional conversations to be had, but, um, I don't think the, the answer is to just, you know, tell everybody, oh yeah, here's another can, and you can keep, you know, continuing the, the non-recycling lifestyle that you've, you already had for the last fifty years.
Well, here's the thing, um, yes, and I, and I appreciate your comments, but I would note that the citizens have been very compliant with the recycling. It was the DPW that undid the dual-stream recycling under a prior interim administration. The citizens, and many of us, still continue to do it, only to watch it getting dumped into the truck.
Yeah, we did too, I get it.
I, I think the citizens are into the recycling, and I actually think they embrace it and want to do it. Um, many citizens, the main services they get from the city are the trash pickup and the plow. That's like the major service that they receive for the tax money that they pay. So I would just like to be able to add something into here, um, where people would be able to get that pickup, because certainly our guys are gonna be picking up a lot less trash now with one ninety-six gallon barrel than they were before the barrels came into being. So the workload should be really a lot lighter than it had been. So it seems to me, we could amend this a little bit to put in some relief for a lot of single elders and other people with limitations in our city that just can't, you know, run down to the downtown. But, anyway, that's me. Um, Counselor Jordan?
Say, um, agree with pretty much everything everybody has said.
Can you get closer to your mic?
All right, I'll go now. Um, yes, I did want to just say, I, I basically agree with all the comments that have been made so far. I, uh, strongly support recycling. I put tons of recycle out, I'm sort of a recycling fanatic, actually. Uh, whenever anything can be recycled, I, I totally support that for obviously sustainability reasons. Um, couple of things I did want to just mention in whatever becomes the final product, um, just feedback that I've received from citizens, and, um, I think I talked to a pretty good cross-section of Hoyum, was, one, oversized families, um, you know, you start getting in a family where you're six, seven, eight people in a house, the one barrel, it might not work. Um, that's gotta be a situation, which my overarching theme will be, we gotta put in a clause here where there has to be some level of extenuating circumstances, that the superintendent can have flexibility to evaluate people's unique situations, whether you're a senior or you're a very large family, that you have a capacity to get a second barrel in those type of circumstances. Not as of right, but, you know, you should be able to get it and, and say, where we actually build some criteria in here, um, and maybe they have an appeal to the mayor or something like this, um, if it's something where they feel they're being really mistreated, um, because sort of the buck stops with the mayor on a lot of this day-to-day operation stuff. Um, I think we should build something there. I, I think we also need to consider that I generally like the program, um, of the, of the barrel, for a lot of the reasons people have stated here already. The one downside to having this program is the fact that we've now signed up for future liability for all these trash barrels. Today, the system is, people provide their own barrels. Now, the current ordinance already requires you to have a barrel. This notion that you can put out, you know, unlimited trash bags on the street that are getting ripped up and causing litter around town, that's already illegal. It's just, it hasn't been enforced. That's, that, you're already supposed to be using a thirty-five gallon barrel, and if those issues, um, were needed to be corrected, they could have started there in terms of their enforcement. Having said that, um, there's gotta be an ability for people to get smaller barrels. Um, number one, there's some people that have no way to store, uh, on the ninety-six gallon barrel. They have no physical strength, many residents, to manage such a barrel, that either they're elderly or they're disabled, there has to be a capacity written in here for smaller barrels. And there also has to be a capacity written in here that if you have really unique situations, maybe you can't even manage the one city thirty-five gallon barrel. Um, for example, you have some citizens that live in a Philadelphia cottage, and it's all, all stairs down to the sidewalk. And if they're seventy-five years old, eighty years old, the unique circumstances of their property are, they can't tote a barrel down to the street, uh, full or empty, and, and that's a problem. Otherwise, in those neighborhoods, you're gonna be left with a situation where these barrels are potentially being left on the sidewalk twenty-four-seven, which is not very sightly. And then, number two, it opens up the other situation that I need us to consider, um, is the whole thing about lost and damaged barrels. Who's ultimately gonna be responsible for that? What if people say, I can't afford a hundred dollars for another barrel? My, somebody stole my barrel, somebody damaged my barrel, and then it's pointing fingers, no, it was the trash man that did it, or no, the street plow did it, or who, who knows what, you know, somebody backed into it with their car, I can't afford a hundred dollars. See, this is the one downside, because now, we're saying to people, you've got this city-owned barrel, so now we're gonna have to be the barrel police on all of this, when before it was, you were on the hook for your own barrel. And my concern now is, um, you know, these barrels can be expensive, um, so we gotta consider unique situations if people ultimately cannot have a barrel, or they don't have the money to replace their barrel. And what are we gonna do in those situations? So I want, I think the superintendent in those, I don't think there'll be a lot of those, but I'd like him to have the ability to use his, his or hers good judgment to figure that, those type of situations out. Um, the other thing I think we should consider is, um, issues related to the permit program, um, you know, is seven the right number anymore? I don't know, maybe not. Maybe, maybe we need to do more than seven, um, in the course of a year. Maybe it's the bulk purchase, uh, the bulk pickup program as, as you've articulated. Um, I'd just like to see a few of these things, um, considered and written into the language, and, uh, we figure it out, but, uh, I, I think the citizens are, are overall warm to what we're trying to do and the city's trying to do here. And, um, you know, I think we can figure it out if we have reasonable components to it.
Thank you. Um, the other thing I would note is, in the legal form, um, the twelve thirty-five gallon containers has been completely eliminated, so that would eliminate the ability of people to put their yard waste in those barrels if they can't have the barrels. So I think we have to make sure the whole yard waste issue, um, does not get thrown out with the trash issue. So, um, what I'm hoping is, we've got some ideas here, we've had some discussion, and that at our next meeting, maybe DPW reps can be, and we can have a little bit more of a discussion and see if we can work some of the amendments into this draft. Uh, Counselor Givner? Is that a new hand from you?
It was, but I, I lost my train of thought, so sorry.
Oh, well, if it comes back to, oh, try to see that. But I, I don't think we're gonna be able to finish this tonight, and I do think we need some feedback from DPW, and we hope that Carl is feeling better, and, um, maybe we'll have room to take this up again on the twelfth. What, what does the committee think about that?
Um, Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor Givner?
Thanks. Um, so, just about the yard waste, that's, that's still in the ordinance, and it never, it never says how you can or cannot put it out, so that's not actually, um, affected by this section of the ordinance. If we wanna, and there's also already wording in this change about, um, there being discretion in case you need a smaller, a smaller, um, bin from DPW, and they did say they would be getting those for people if they needed them, so, um, that's already in there. So we're, basically, this ordinance makes it so that the city can use this ninety-six gallon container, and for now, I think that's more important, um, to have this be legal so that it's not an issue, and we can always add things, change things. Um, it may be a good idea to revisit us and create a new section that talks about a separate pickup for like oversized trash, you know, on a special day, twice a year, or whatever, you know, but I don't think it necessarily has to be connected directly to this paragraph, because this is really just dealing with the size of the barrels. Thanks. And I see some.
Does anybody else have their hand up that I'm not seeing that wishes to speak on this?
Yes.
I see Counselor Rivera.
Yeah. So, so, so for me, um, I think I, I echo the sentiment of Counselor Givner, where, um, a lot of the issues that have been brought up are kind of already in the ordinance, um, with regards to like, uh, um, the outdoor waste, um, that's, that's its own beast on its own, I guess, right? Uh, it's just for the lack of better terms. It's not necessarily incorporated within this. I think that, uh, I'm okay with voting it the way it is for now, so that we make it legal for us to use these ninety-five gallon barrels for the time being, and then, as we go on through the process, um, someone can file an order to, to make sure that we cover some of the other issues and topics that you guys brought up, but for the time being, right now, we are actually not following our own policy, and I think that it's important for us, at least for setting, the, the setting of precedent and, and, and the example showing, for us to start following some of the policies that we have in place, and making sure that we, we correct the ones that need to be corrected. And this is one that we can actually do tonight, um, simply the way it is, and, and, and later on, we can add in whatever needs to be added with regards to some of the concerns that have been raised, which I full-heartedly agree with, um, for the most part. But, um, I think that it is important for us to, to, to move on with this ninety-five gallon barrel, um, ordinance, and make sure that, uh, we are following policies that we are creating as we go.
Thank you. Um, so I, I have a little different perspective on this, um, partially because this wasn't anything that was crafted, that the citizens were aware of was really happening, it is something that was really imposed, and I'm not saying whether I agree or disagree with it, but in terms of what we do with this ordinance, I think it's really important to take into consideration the concerns and the hardships of the residents, and give our DPW director enough flexibility to be able to address them in a constructive way. Um, I had heard there would be thirty-five gallon receptacles, sixty-four gallon receptacles, or ninety-six available. In this draft ordinance, it only talks about sixty-four. Um, it eliminates the twelve thirty-five gallon containers, which people have told they can still use for their yard waste, and I am concerned. I know you say yard waste is in a separate category, but there's only one place where it says you can have twelve thirty-five gallon containers, and I don't want to see that eliminated, because then people will not have the right to put them out, and I want to make sure they do. And I would like to write in the bulk language. I mean, I think it's important that we do this right. I mean, we don't have to hurry up and write an ordinance because somebody put out a new rule. I think we need to- I think we need to craft it carefully and be considerate of the people we represent in doing it. And I think we can end up with a win-win here, you know, probably in another meeting. But I think some of this language needs to be put in, like the 35 gallon, for the people who can't manage much. There's people that are wheelchair-bound. There's all kinds of people out in our community dealing with a variety of issues structurally and physically. So I, I wanna see more flexibility written in here. And I, I would like to send this back to legal with the thing about the bulk pickup put in, the 35 gallons put in, that the DPW director has discretion to say a person can buy a second 96 gallon barrel if they've got five or six kids? I mean, we're not in the business of telling people how to live their life. And if they have twice as many kids as somebody else, then they're probably gonna have twice as much trash. And I think the other unintended consequence we wanna make sure we don't cause is people dumping outside of the system, you know, going back up in woods and back to the alleys, you know? So, I don't know, I, I think we could have one more meeting, have our DPW people in and just build in two or three more things that make it a little bit more friendly to the citizens and make it a win-win. But that's my perspective on it. That's what I'd like to see. Councilor Givner?
I just noticed, uh, a 96 and a 95 gallon blurb in the legal form, so we'd have to get that corrected anyway. Um, and again, I, I think it's, I think it's a great idea to add all these things, but when you look at the whole rubbish or refuse ordinance, there are sections that cover every aspect of what you're talking about. And so those are the sections that should be addressed. They don't need to be in this section. This is a separate section.
But I'm, so just help me out here because I'm not looking at the whole ordinance. When it talks about yard waste, does it say?
It doesn't have the amount, the type of containers that it needs to be in at all. It doesn't say it. So that's what I'm saying, like, if we wanna add those containers, we could add those to that section. Um, right now, it just says that, you know, the, the yard waste season is from X to Y months, you know? It doesn't say how to dispose of things. So, you know, I've seen everything from 35 gallons being used to the paper bags that you can get at the, you know, at the store. Um, also, we've been putting out, just like the DPW recommended, we, we, um, put labels on our 35 gallon trash bins for recycling of paper and plastic, and they've been picked up every week with the paper and plastic in them instead of refuse. So, um, if those, I can understand how those things probably need to be written in, but they don't need to be written here, is my point.
Thank you. Um, Attorney Mandalesky?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I think, um, I will have the, um, air fixed in the legal form, um, that Councilor Givner wanted to have fixed. And, um, but I think it does say under, where am I? Um, 7462, that during the leaf and yard waste collection season, residents shall place their leaf and yard waste materials into paper leaf bags as defined herein. So I think they're technically supposed to be paper leaf bags, and they have a definition of that up, up top, um, in the definition section.
I see that now, too. So maybe that's somewhere where we could add the, um, the, the language about being able to use old, old bins, old 35 gallon bins, or any bins under whatever size is easy for them to pick up.
Right.
It'd be helpful with recycling, too, with that way, too.
Exactly.
Yeah, because the, the 35 gallon containers have always been picked up for yard waste.
Yeah.
As well as.
But they're not in the ordinance either, just like, uh, unmanned trash bags and piles have been picked up, and that hasn't been enforced either. So I, I think it's a good idea to add, you know, the size of containers into getting the leaves picked up and the recycling picked up, you know, and then we don't have to deal with it again.
Right. But it, but it, in fairness, it was over in this part of the ordinance that the barrels could be used. So it covered the other part. If we take it out, then you're only left with the bags. Just saying. It's all in the details, these things.
Oh, I understand, which is why I just said we, we should probably add bins to those other sections if that's necessary, but, well, up to you guys.
Yeah, I'd wanna see it happen at the same time so people aren't take, having anything more taken away from them. But Attorney Mandalesky, if you can help us out on this, because we understood that there was gonna be a 35 gallon availability also?
Okay, um, I will. Did you, did you guys wanna wait until next time to have, um, Carl come in?
I do, I do, but I don't know if the will of the committee is such that.
Yeah, no, I just wanna make sure I didn't miss it. Um, but I can definitely add in, um, under section, excuse me, one that in case of hardship, the city shall provide, um, either, do we wanna have just the 35, or do we wanna have either 164 or 35?
I'd let it be flexible, but I, but I would also like to have in there that the, um, Director Public Works could also determine that a second 96 gallon barrel is needed in a case of hardship. I mean, there has to be some discretion here. I mean, we're not gonna be able to discriminate against large families, right? Because they can't have trash, I mean.
All right. So one, in case of hardship, the city shall provide either 164 gallon receptacle, 135 gallon receptacle, or up to one additional 96 gallon receptacle for rubbish collection.
At the discretion of the Public Works Director.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm just really concerned that when, because parts of this ordinance, I understand that technically they are separate in the way that they're written, but in the way that they have been practiced, they have been merged in that if you could put your trash in a barrel, you could put your yard waste in a barrel, and the barrels were picked up. If we eliminate this language over here, then we're making it so nobody can put their grass and their leaves in a barrel anymore, which right now is allowed because it's in this part of the ordinance. So what I'd like to do is if we're gonna take it out of here, that we put it over in the section, rather than deleting this language that says the 12 35 gallon barrels, I'd rather move it to the yard waste section. Can we do that?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So then we just give it a new numerical reference.
Just add, I'll just add in that section to the yard waste.
And then on the bulk thing, is there somewhere in here where we could put, um, that there will be bulk pickup developed in some way by the director of the DPW? I mean, maybe it would be a one or two time a year pickup, maybe it would be a person has to call in to get a pickup, maybe they only wanna do it and set dates by the city? I mean, I don't know, but could, can we write in here something where the city will develop?
I, I, I mean, we could put in some language, maybe that, um, the DPW superintendent could or director could have up to, may have up to two bulk, bulk waste collection days or something like that? So it gives him the discretion to do that?
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilor Givner?
Why would we add in something that's being developed into ordinance? Why wouldn't we let the DPW develop it and then add the ordinance for it?
Because they're doing it now, and it's another thing we're taking away.
They're doing bulk pickup twice a year right now?
No, they're doing bulk pickup at people's houses.
So they're picking up couches randomly at people's houses?
Well, they're picking up. Attorney Mandalesky, maybe you can help me out with this?
I, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know what they're doing. Um, if, if Carl was here, that would be great. Um, but so I, I, maybe, maybe we leave that one, um, for a time when he can actually speak on that.
Sure. But I guess the example I would use is a person putting out a broken chair and a broken lamp, they've been getting picked up. Under this, if they can't go in the barrel, they won't get picked up.
They weren't getting picked up before, supposedly, if it wasn't in the barrel.
Well, to your earlier point, they were picking up 20 bags that they weren't supposed to.
They weren't supposed to do that. So, so you're, you wanna put into ordinance something that we weren't enforcing before?
Well, I'm not clear that the ordinance says we won't pick up a broken chair. I think we're taking things away with, that's what I wanna make sure we're not doing.
Mm-hmm.
So I think it would be helpful if we can get these changes made and have Carl come in and he can say, no, we've never done it and we never will, or yes, we always have and yes, we could, and we'll hear what he has to say.
So then I'd make a motion to table this to the next meeting and, or to the next meeting when Carl's available.
Okay. I'll second that.
Because I mean, we're talking in circles here about something.
Well, yep. So on that motion, um, Councilor Rivera?
So, uh, I was gonna make a motion to pass the language as is. You guys can edit it as you want later on. Uh, does it make sense, uh, to procrastinate and push things back just 'cause you feel a certain way or you want certain things included that you want to include or that can be included later on in the future? Right now, we're allowing us to continue functioning out of ordinance, knowing that intentionally. That does not make sense, and it doesn't set good precedent for the city or for any of our departments overall. I don't understand what's happening right here. Like, a lot of the things right now, not for nothing, no disrespect, but you're the chair, you should not be managing the conversation in a way where you're directing the conversation. It's mostly about facilitating as a chair. I don't speak as much as I can when I am the chair, right? And I'm not controlling and making rules and making new things. I've had my hand raised for quite some time. I do not agree with a lot of the additions that you added on to, um, the, 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 the new language to, to, to be. I, I'm okay with it being as it is right now. I, I'd be honest. If later on, you guys wanna make edits and do things different, you can file another order, we can have another conversation and do that. I don't understand why it's okay to continue functioning in a way where it is not lawful for us to do things. I don't understand why that is okay and why that is a precedent that is okay for us to set forth for the community moving forward. So this is where I'm confused, and I'm trying to understand how we're trying to move forward. So if we're trying to build new systems and be more progressive on how we do things, we're gonna still build systems that will go back and undo the things that we were trying to do as a community that is trying to progress moving forward. So this is the part where it's not that complex, but is confusing when we say we're overspending, right? We try to say that on one hand, we spend too much money in certain departments and that we should be spending money in ways that are, uh, at, um, efficient and, and fiscally responsible. But at the same time, we pull up arguments that counter that same exact narrative. So I'm confused here as to what is the point and what is the goal of the council moving forward? Are we trying to save money as a community? Are we trying to provide the best services effectively and efficiently as we can consistently, not making special occasions or special clauses because of some left-field ideology that we just came up with right now in this moment? So I am confused here, and for me, it, it makes sense to go with what we have now and then continue to build, change, and alter after that. Because right now, we are functioning in a way where it's not lawful, but apparently in this body or the body that we've been functioning in, it's okay to do some of these things because it's been done that way for a very long time. Thank you.
Thank you. You are very well entitled to your opinion, but in committees, chairs are allowed to enter debate.
It is fact that we are not functioning under law.
We are here drafting the local law as we should be. Thank you. Councilor Jordan?
Couple of points, Madam Chair. Number one is, I'm gonna be speaking, of course, against my own, uh, rules due to the fact that technically motions to table are not debatable.
Correct.
But since we're going down this road, I'll just make a couple of points. Uh, number, number one is, somebody made the decision, was, I don't think anybody on the, in this room, uh, did to spend two-thirds of a million dollars to buy trash cans, uh, that I never heard from one citizen that said, Kevin, if you could do five things, can, can, can you go give me a, a city-owned trash, uh, can, and let's have a city-run trash can program? Uh, nobody ever asked for that. So the decision about spending money, they decided to spend two-thirds of a million dollars. And interestingly enough, they did that before they ever changed the ordinance or there was any public meeting about what any of all of this was gonna, and how this was all gonna go down. So the question I would actually pose in reverse is, that's when the quote-unquote illegality occurred. They've been operating the program and started it, and guess what? It was a surprise to them that we even had an ordinance. Because when I filed the order to say, hey, everybody, don't we gotta fix the ordinance first? It was like, oh, no, what ordinance? What are you talking? And then it was a light bulb went off. So let's just kinda remember what our quote-unquote legal posture. So this whole thing about how can we allow this to happen for two more weeks? Well, what do you mean? The, I mean, they created the program in contravention to the current ordinance, which basically just said is, your, your trash is supposed to be barreled. So if anybody, you know, the, all the ne'er-do-wells apparently that are out there that aren't bagging, uh, aren't barreling their trash, they should have been ticketing that trash and handing those people tickets, because that's already the current. But that's neither here nor there. I think everybody's making good points. I think we have a lot, and I think we're 99% in common of the five of us. Councilor Malanado Velez hasn't spoken, so maybe I'm speaking for him, but we're all saying the same thing, honestly. I think we all basically want common sense here, and we want the program to be a success. But I do think my concern is we should put this, our best foot forward the right way. I think we need to go through this for two weeks. I thank Jeffrey for now sending me a copy of the ordinance, too. Um, and, and try and address as many of these things because what I find is, if we're gonna make amendments, they'll pass in the total package, and you have less likely to get some of these things later. If it's like, oh, yeah, well, six months from now, we'll figure out what we're gonna do for exceptions or 35 gallon or somebody's barrels damaged. Because then, you know, somebody says, oh, well, we're gonna veto, you know, your change on that, and now it never happens. And right now, we got the whole package that we're gonna put some sort of togetherness package on all of this. I don't think we're that far away that this can't wait two weeks.
Right.
Um, you know, so that's why I'm in favor of the tabling, because I think we're gonna get where we need to be in two weeks.
Thank you for your, thank you for your point of order. So on the motion to table, and I'll put it on the agenda for December 12th, all in favor, um, Givner?
Yes, but can I, can I, I only wanna table it if we know that we can have Carl in to answer questions. Otherwise, I really, I'm feeling a little regretful about tabling it all, because I still feel strongly that it's, it's just a section of what we need, and I don't see why it has to be 10 more meetings to figure out how to put in what the DPW wants to do for a pickup program.
Well, he would have been here except for his surgery, so we're optimistic that he'll be able to be here by the 12th.
And then we have to do, and then we have to have a meeting about how he feels about and what he can do. So now it becomes another budget question of what his apartment can afford to do as far as.
Not necessarily.
Pick up. Absolutely, it's a budget thing. I mean, if they have to go out and pick up bulk stuff, that's a whole separate conversation, so.
We don't know how much they're saving on the 96 gallon barrel.
I'd like to rescind my tabling. I'd like to rescind my tabling motion and just make a motion to accept this legal language and send it to committee.
Let's finish this vote and then we can go to the next whatever.
But I can't rescind my motion?
You can't. No, the motion was made to table. You voted yes. You can rescind your vote and say no.
Okay, I'd like to rescind my vote. No.
Counsel Jordan? Counsel Rivera?
No.
Counsel Maldonado Velez?
No.
Bacon? Yes. So the motion to table fails.
So then I make a motion to send the legal language to the full council.
Second.
With the amendments that we've sent to legal during the course of this committee meeting?
With the amendment of the 95 to 96-gallon typo in the second paragraph.
And what about the 35 gallons that people have been already promised?
They should go in a different section with the.
This section.
No, it's not. It's a separate section.
Yes, it is.
No, no, no. That's fine. That's fine.
It's a separate section.
Just pass it 3-2 and this will pass at the main council.
It's a whole, yeah.
And then we'll all just come back here with a new order. We'll all live happily ever after.
Yeah, it'll be fine.
There you go. Thank you.
I mean, we can see how this is gonna play out. Pass it 3-2 and we move forward. No problem.
Yes, go ahead. Oh, I see Counsel Puelo has his hand up.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I was just gonna say, I don't know why you would do that because, I mean, if we're talking about efficient city services, right now, they don't, they have the protections they need while we're working out the ordinance. So if you don't fix it properly and leave out all these other things, you're kind of messing with people that need all this extra stuff. So, all right, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion to pass the language as written, fixing one typo. People have been promised 35-gallon containers.
So add it in to the next section.
It's for trash. It's for rubbish.
On the motion, on the motion, on Counsel Givner's motion, let us move forward.
Go ahead. Counsel Givner? On your motion. Counsel Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
Counsel Rivera?
Yes.
Counsel Jordan?
No.
Counsel Bacon? No. So 3-2, it'll go to City Council at the next meeting. Okay. Item. I would entertain a motion to make up items 11 and 12 as a package if the committee is so willing.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Item 11, filed by Jordan and Puelo, City Council reviewed the law for the enforcement of rights of reverter and extensions of reverter. Item 12, by Jordan and Puelo, Law Department provides City Council with an inventory of all outstanding rights of reverter with parcel ID numbers, address what the current reverter expiration date is, if it has one, provide a summary of the condition that the reverter is based on, i.e. change of use, such as it no longer used as a golf course or if no development by X date. We have had a legal opinion provided by our Law Department and we have had a list of the properties provided to us. So what is the will of the committee? Counsel Jordan, you're the maker on here, and Counsel Puelo?
Yeah, first of all, thank you to Counsel Attorney Mantuleski for sending us the legal opinion. That's really appreciated. I have a different twist on it in terms of where I think in being consistent with what the Law Department had told us in 2011 on this topic, I'd like to just kind of go over a couple of points. One, the overarching point is that the current ordinance allows us to put conditions when we sell property. And one of the things, and I don't know why this didn't make it into the legal opinion, but I'm gonna bring this one section. It's kind of pivotal to the discussion. So when we consider 2-349, it says, "When on recommendation of the mayor, the City Council declares by two-thirds vote that a parcel of real property, other than park property, is available for disposition on such lawful terms and restrictions." That's a key word. "On such lawful terms and restrictions, as are in the best interest of the city, the mayor shall direct the city solicitor to rent, convey, or otherwise dispose of the real property in a manner consistent with Massachusetts law." So a couple of things. One is just for housekeeping. 2-349, when we did a re-indexing, became 2-336. But the language all stayed the same. The Law Department in 2011 ruled, Lisa Ball, by the way, was solicitor, she wrote this, that we can put these conditions on these sales. So that, for example, if we say there's a two-year right of reverter, that doesn't mean that the mayor can then change that to four years without our approval or change it to six years or 10 years or lord knows what else. Or, "I like you, so I give you an extra three years. I don't like you on this property, so I give it to you, it's enforced in two." There, if we have those type of specific inclusions in the rules that we've made those type of quote-unquote conditions on it, then those should be enforced. And what I'm concerned about, now, if we leave it open-ended, then I think we need to be more careful in our drafting, okay? Because I think if it's open-ended, there might be an argument in favor of the mayor having some level of discretion here to do what he wants. But if the council, as a condition of the sale, says it's two-year right of reverter, that's the way it is. And that is a condition of the sale and that is supposed to be there. And if we want to extend it, I would argue in that case, they have to come back and get our permission to extend it. But if we don't put that kind of a condition, then I think it is open-ended and the mayor has the discretion, is basically my point. I think it's, I think it's important that these things, these conditions be reviewed and being enforced. I'm concerned they're not coming back. So I think I would have to judge it on a one-on-one sort of basis. Maybe they were left open-ended, you know, the sale didn't really, we didn't really spell it out and so maybe that gives the mayor that level of discretion. So that was the kind of the impetus for the inventory, which I appreciate the Law Department, but who has one? But they didn't provide the other details. They did provide the address, so thank you for that. But they didn't provide like, is it a two-year or like, what are the different conditions of these? And I guess I just had an operational question, which is, I mean, are these being pretty closely watched? You know, because like, for example, the. Was the issue relative to, it wasn't actually a durational right of reverter, use right of reverter, relative to Wyckoff Park? A lot of people may not realize, but in order to put in the golf course, the city and the Water Department gave for a big section of its city property, gave them a right to use this piece of property, provided they used it as a golf course. But if they ever used it for something other than a golf course, then that was revoked. The right of reverter was, would take that away from the golf course. And that became kind of a hot potato because there was a discussion about Wyckoff Park becoming a casino and all of that and what did that entail? So people started really looking into these things. So anyways, Lisa came down, I felt, on the right side at that time about, you know, the city having, you know, the City Council's authority and the conditions. And I don't feel the law, the legal opinion, while I agree with a number of parts of it, I don't feel it addresses some of that nuanced language. And if we did put those conditions in, then, you know, having those enforced. So I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Mantuleski?
Sorry. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So I just wanted to first touch on the opinion. And I don't think that they, the opinion that Attorney Ball gave in 2011 is, you know, in conflict with this opinion. The opinion she gave was that conditions can be attached, right? This opinion says, yes, of course, you can attach conditions, but then there's a certain inherent power reserved to the executive branch and then carrying out what those terms are. So I don't think they're in conflict, but I would also just like to state that in our RFPs, one recently, just that I know you'll be getting soon, because I think they're coming on your next agenda. But just our reverter clauses and part of our RFPs say that specifically that the buyer shall have a right to request an extension of the reverter. So those are in our RFPs. So those do come to the City Council when you are approving the RFP responses because they do have to sign a reverter clause. So those are in front of the council so that you guys are aware that there may be a condition or there is a condition that they may also request an extension. So that was just one. And then I just wanted to make sure that you all do have the Excel spreadsheet with the current information, because I have address, parcel number, owner, and then reverter period. Essentially, with the exception of 1772 Dwight, all of them have essentially development completeness for reverters. One of them, Dwight Parcel is neighbor-to-neighbor. It's just that they have a use contingency that'd be utilized for a community garden. So, and then I did provide the dates there to when those technically expire. But I also wanted to note that I did put an asterisk in here because there's been some case law recently that's, well, maybe not even recently, but within the last 20 years, that the Courts of Health, Mass. General Laws 184, Section 7, essentially allows you to continue that that reverter stays in place until the contingency is met for up to 30 years. So technically, even though some of our reverters provide that if development isn't complete within two years, we can come in and take that property back, even if those two years have been up by, so for example, 278 Pine, there was a development to be complete within two years and that expired on April 19th, 2020 technically. We technically, the city technically still has that right if development has not occurred, which I don't believe it has. So there are various, so just because the reverter period for development is over technically under the document, we can still come in and exercise those rights. Thank you.
Madam, Madam Chair?
Can I recognize Counsel Puelo or do you have a follow-up on your?
Yeah, just a quick, thank you all. Just a quick follow-up.
Okay.
I didn't get the Excel file. All I got was a PDF chain, which has the list of the properties with the addresses. Could you send me the Excel file and, or give it to Jeff so that I can review? Because I didn't see that extra detail that you're mentioning. And could, did you include that statute that you're mentioning in your legal opinion?
I did that. It was part of my Excel spreadsheet because I think the legal opinion was just on, I want to make sure I'm saying it right, the enforcement rights. So I could have, I could do an amendment with respect to those enforcement rights. But I did include it on the Excel spreadsheet and I believe Jeffrey does have it. I think it's hands raised, so he can speak to that.
Yeah, if I could just interject. So the document you sent, I just, I saved it as a PDF and then sent it out, but the Excel sheet that I'm looking at that you sent me just has information in two columns.
So the one that I have, if you look, if you saved it as a PDF, like if you did like print to PDF, then it'll probably cut it off because it printed it as like a portrait mode as opposed to like a landscape on a 11 by 17. But it definitely has all that in there, but I can forward it on to whoever right now.
So here's what I see in the Excel document right now.
Yeah, no, I definitely have a different one, so I don't know why that is the one. Let me see. Hold on one second. I have to leave, I should leave my full, my full screen. All right. So I hope I didn't send you the one, wrong one, Jeffrey. All right, so Jeffrey. On Monday? Jeffrey, is that the one that you had on Monday when I sent this over yesterday?
So you, in the email, you said it was the same one you had sent in October.
Oh, I meant the letter, but the Excel spreadsheet was new. I'm sorry. So when I said I believe you should have, already have the letter that was sent in October, but the Excel spreadsheet was updated. No, no, no. So that was just our miscommunication. So yeah, that Excel spreadsheet has all the language under the order, including the parcel number and the reverter period.
All right, I'll send that, send that.
I'm sorry. Thank you. So yeah, that was just a miscommunication, but you should be getting that from Jeffrey soon.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Puelo?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And just really quickly, I just want to say I also don't really agree with this opinion. I think, you know, just to, I mean, just to address point one, council approval is unnecessary because the mayor has executive power to dispose of property. Well, we gave him a specific disposition to go by. We gave him a specific outline that includes the reverter, that includes the dates. If he goes outside of that, I mean, I think he needs approval. I think point two is contradictory to the entire opinion. I mean, what's a substantial change? It says, "City Council approval is unnecessary unless the reverter extension contains a substantial change." In my opinion, any change needs council approval. We approved a specific deal. And then in the second sentence of that point, it says, "When the City Council voted on final approval of the sale, their vote was not contingent on the information contained in the reverter clause." Well, mine was. My vote was contingent on all the information that was presented that day, on everything that we got. And if something changed, my understanding was that people are supposed to come back and say why they didn't do what they said they were gonna do and then we would decide whether or not we would give them an extension on our original deal. So, you know, I really don't agree with it. I think we have a big problem here with all these reverters that have been approved by the mayor, I guess, that are outstanding. I think it brings up some very serious liability issues for the city. And, you know, I do have a question because my understanding was that reverters typically, as precedent, that they go back to the council. So I guess my question would be, when did we start approving them? When did the mayor start approving them? Because my understanding was that normally in the past, they would go back to the council for approval.
Attorney Mantuleski?
I don't have an answer. Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have an answer for when the mayor started doing the reverters, but I can say that that language that you quoted in, that Counsel Puelo quoted, came specifically from a Mass. Supreme Judicial Court opinion. So there's nothing, that's the highest court in this, in this state. So there's, that's not my opinion, that's theirs. So when they say that you could not, or that.
So when they say that you could not, or that, you don't, the legislature doesn't have to look into what is going to be in a reverter clause, that's just, that's what they said, because the legislature essentially approved having a reverter clause. So that's, again, that's not me, that's the Supreme Judicial Court. But again, our RFP clauses, which do come, our reverter clauses in our RFPs, which do come to the full council as part of the, as part of the package when they approve a sale, does include the language regarding extension and that an extension can be had. So that was already in there. Thank you.
So Attorney Mantuleski, if I can just ask a follow-up question, if you're all, are you all set, Counselor Puelo, or do you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up real quick, if I could, Madam Chair.
Okay, sure.
I'll forget my point. Thank you. I just, just to address that, I mean, I think, I understand that the specific case law is being cited, I get, you know, that's outside the opinion, but it still says that if it was, if it was a substantial change, we would need to, we would need a vote on. So what's a substantial change? I think any change needs that. And then just to address the case law, just really quick, so I read that over and I looked it up, and my understanding of this case law is that in this specific situation, the city tried to insert a reverter without select board approval. And then the investors were upset. And they sued, and then the court said, that's fine, that they can put it in later, the reverter. So it's a totally different situation than what we have here. Here, we have a reverter that's already been voted on by the city council. So this case law is, it's not even close to what's happening with the city. So there, it's just not, you know, it's completely different, but just to address that, thank you.
I disagree, thank you.
So I have a follow-up question on that. So if I'm recalling correctly, I think the reason we have a reverter clause in these sales is because city council passed something to include the reverter language in there because we had properties that people bought and did nothing with for 10 years. And so the reverter language got included in the RFP proposal, I believe through some act of city council, so that we wouldn't keep sitting on these properties. To your earlier point, we're trying to get rid of these properties, not keep them and keep extending and extending how long we're holding on to them, right? So we kind of got one hand doing this and the other hand doing something else. So I mean, you know, and there's always a little bit of that in any system, I suppose. But I think that's how the reverter clause originally got in there. So it would seem that if there's some process to tighten that up or whatever, we would have to probably go through a similar process that we did to establish it in the RFP process in the first place? Would that be correct?
I'm honestly not sure how it came, so I.
Because I can't remember all the details.
Yeah.
But I know it didn't exist and then it was created, but, okay. Counselors, your day. We can't hear you.
Okay, how about now?
Yes.
Okay. Just to kind of hopefully bring a conclusion, I, I think we're hopefully not as far off from each other on the process. I think the council is going to need to show added due diligence going forward. We've seen this from time to time when like, for example, with bond language, we've had to make sure we add additional clauses and extra precision as to what our specific intent is. If we have not been clear enough in the past on some of these, I think perhaps we've allowed, through our imprecision, perhaps, an ability for people to add on or extend or do different things. What we might have to consider doing in the future is be more precise in our language when we pass these final packages, what specifically we're going to approve. So we consider what the law department has said for sure. I consider that with the Attorney Ball opinion, which basically said, we have the authority to have these conditions and to have them enforced, but we have to make sure that we're wording them in such a way. And then we'll have to consider the RFP language that's coming in. We have the ability, though, under law, to add conditions to our sale. And so we have to be very precise what we're doing. So now that we know that this is going on and these things are recurring, if we want to curb it, we'll have to tighten up our language going forward. And if we do that, we should be fine. And again, it comes down to how much leeway do we want to leave? You know, we want to close these deals, but at the same time, we've had problems in the past where rights of reverter were waived time and time and time and time again, which kind of defeats the point. And we also want to consider, well, why we have to be very precise what our language is. We might have approved a sale price with a quick deal that they're going to turn the property around and make a business or develop it, but if it's going to be 10 years, we might say, well, you know what? We want more money. You know, we reject this deal because they really can't perform this in two years or three years. They need a long horizon. But all of that needs to come forward at the table so that we're doing our due diligence because you can see what the executive is doing in this area. They're perhaps extending these things for longer than we would normally allow or want based on what's going on. So we have a, we have an ability on our side of things to, of our side of city, all here to fix this.
Okay. So Counselors, Jordane, Puelo, what is your desire relative to items 11 and 12?
To me, I mean, I'll let Will speak for himself, but for me, I feel it's been complied with, provided I get the Excel file, which sounds like it's going to be sent over to us, so I think we're good.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
A motion that's been complied with.
For items 11 and 12 as a package?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Jordane?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
Vacan, yes. Okay, so we're all set with 11 and 12, 5-0. Item 13, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor Givner?
I just was wondering for items eight and, and 10, if we wanted to leave, to withdraw those, because we had taken those items up as a package with the rubbish, or if.
Good point, thank you. We also took up seven.
Oh, sorry.
So.
Well, 10 can definitely, I can definitely motion a leave to withdraw.
Okay. Is there a second on item 10?
Second.
All in favor? Givner?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Vacan, yes. Okay. Item nine was the ordinance itself. Item seven, I think, could be considered complied with, I guess? What is the pleasure of, well, Jordane, you're the primary maker on item seven.
Just repeat number seven again?
Seven was invite Mayor DPW to review Chapter 74 and how this reconciles with the rollout in light of our already existing laws. It is requested that they review their proposal with us so we and citizens can understand it better.
I'll use that as the vehicle for round two, I guess, so I'd like to have that tabled.
I'll second that. No debate. On the motion? Jordane?
Yes.
Vacan, yes. Givner?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Okay, so that is, item seven is tabled 5-0. Item eight, that was filed by Counselor Bartley. He wanted flexibility in it, there is no flexibility in it, so I will make a motion to table item eight.
Second.
On the motion? Givner?
Yes.
Vacan, yes. Rivera?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
No.
Was that a no? I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was a no.
Okay. Jordane?
Yes.
Okay, so that is tabled 4-0, so. Seven and eight are tabled, nine is going to city council, and 10 was given leave to withdraw. Thank you for that reminder, Counselor Givner. I appreciate it. So now entertain a motion to take up item 13?
A motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Filed by Vacan, ordered that street vendors who have received the license may be granted a renewal of the license for the same location without a hearing when all required approvals are presented with the application and any required fees, taxes are paid. So we were provided legal form on this. There is. Attorney Mantuleski, do you have a copy of this?
I do.
Okay, great. So I think there was a little misunderstanding of the intent of my order because, help me out if I'm misreading this language, because the way I'm reading Section 22-186, it says, once the applicant has complied with the provisions of this section, the applicant shall not be required to submit a communication or affidavit to the city council for subsequent years of operation. And the intent of my order was exactly the opposite. It was to eliminate the need for them to have to come in for a public hearing because once the license had been granted, all they then needed to do in my mind was to send in the affidavit that they've paid all the fees, they have all the permits that they're supposed to have, and what they don't then have to do is come in for a hearing again.
Okay, so it does, I will change it to make sure that, it says, once the applicant has complied with the provisions of this section, the applicant maybe shall only be required, or something like that?
Well, so what I put, and it can be changed, it, you know, I just said, the applicant shall not be required to attend a hearing, but only needs to submit the required communication slash affidavit. I don't know why both those words are used, but I just left them in. But it's just to save them having to come in, I mean, for what?
Completely, yep.
Yeah.
So yes, I can make that change.
Okay. And I think that's it. So if the committee's good with this, I'll entertain a motion to recommend the legal form as amended to the city council if committee's good with that.
Sounds good to me, I'll second that.
Okay, so I, okay, so I made the motion to accept it as amended, Counselor Givner's seconding it. So all in favor would be Counselor Givner?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
Counselor Jordane?
Yes.
And Vacan, yes. So that passes as amended, 5-0. Thank you. Okay. Onto item 14, can I entertain a motion? Can I have a motion?
I shouldn't take up item 14.
Nope, second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Item 14 filed by Counselor Puelo, in accordance with the city ordinances, 2-421 be amended to include all public hearings. Oh, wait, no. Hang on a second, I'm sorry. In accordance with the city charter, create ordinance language that confirms that no city, city councilor shall become a member of any board or commission in city government during the term of office. So we have a charter that says if you're sitting on the city council, you have to have a six-month break before you can serve in another capacity, but Counselor Puelo, I'll let you, let us know what you're hoping the committee might do with language.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just as you said, just to reinforce language that in my opinion already exists, we did request, as everyone remembers, a legal opinion from the law department. I think that was over in public service, and unfortunately, we all remember how that went. And, I mean, in my opinion, and it's also still unaddressed, but I think, you know, you can read it, and I interpret it in that way, and I think that having this would just serve to reinforce what we know to be the proper way of doing things. And yeah, that's all.
Okay, so then it would seem that the request of the committee would be to ask our law department to put in legal form, ordinance language that reflects the charter language relative to sitting city councilors, sitting on boards or commissions. So is that something the committee would like to request legal to do? We can ask for that, and it can come back to us at a future meeting?
Don't move.
Is there a second? I'll second it.
Under discussion briefly?
I'm sorry?
Under discussion briefly?
Yes, you need to get closer to your mic.
Under discussion?
Counselor Jordane?
Yeah, just briefly, I also want to understand, you know, like, what's the limitation, you know, on all this, on, is it one other committee, two other committees, you know? Can you be on the DPW commission, the city counselor, the fire commission simultaneously, the retirement board? I mean, some of this is, I was always under the impression we weren't, but then we started getting counselors, unless you had like a specific seat on these commissions that were like a designated city counselor. Now we're on HEADC, we're on MYDA, we're on this board, that board. I'm just trying to understand, like, I would like all of the law departments to really review all of this, as to what city councilors can be on all these other boards and commissions. I think it would be helpful, I think, to, you know, give clarity on all of this, because I've never, I haven't really seen it directly on boards in commissions, like, we're sort of seeing it now, but at the same time, we have had, you know, like, Counselor McGivern's been on HEADC for ages, you know?
You're fading out.
Is, you know, so is that one okay? I would just like to do an inventory.
We can barely hear you.
How about now?
Better.
Well, my last sentence was, you know, Counselor McGivern's been on HEADC forever, as best as I can tell, and is that board under a different enabling statute? That's why that one's allowed? You know, with, what, I'd like the law department to review which ones are allowed and why, and I'd like to know the legal basis for some of these, you know, because to be on the city council and on the Parks Commission, or the city council and the Fire Commission simultaneously, I've, I've never known that to be allowed, but, you know, we've never really had that, so we're sort of in uncharted territory. I'd like to just know how this all works, from the law department's perspective, and then I can form my own opinion. I'm, I'm looking for more knowledge at this point.
Right, so the motion is to request the law department to craft language that reflects the charter and informs us if there are other areas to be considered under the definition, perhaps, of board or commission, and what it would apply to and what it might not apply to. So on that motion, if you're in favor, please vote yes. Counselor Givner?
Yes.
Counselor Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Jordane?
Yes.
And Vacan, yes. So Attorney Mantuleski, have we been clear enough in what we're looking for, for you to work with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion on 15.
Don't move to remove from the table.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Filed by Counselor Puelo, "That we consider crafting an ordinance stipulating requirements for expenditure of funds of the police special events line and requirements. As an example, committee organized event, private businesses participating, alcohol served, who is profiting, et cetera." Um, Counselor Puelo?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think we had a really good discussion on this one. Uh, I think it was at the finance meeting, and I think everyone was there, so I won't rehash every point. Um, but, uh, basically, uh, if, if we could look into maybe some requirements, just as the order says, I, I really like some of the things that were brought up, having a committee, whether the business is selling alcohol, who's participating, things like that. Thank you.
Okay, so would it be fair to ask the legal department to craft draft language that says if it is a private event, that the private business would pay for police details when required? Or is that too narrow?
Was that for me, or?
I'm just asking you, the committee, because this is about details, right?
Yeah, the special events line. Yeah, I mean, we could, we could make it details and, and details and the special events line, whatever you guys want.
Well, that's what it paid for, right? That was the issue?
Friendly suggestion?
Cut. Counselor Jourdain?
In fairness to the law department, they're not really going to know where we want to start with all of this. It might be wise to give, have Will, um, give a first draft to the law department, and then they can review it and send it back to us, and then we have a discussion. And, you know, I'm happy if Will needs assistance to, you know, begin putting some of that language together, but in fairness to the law department, how, how would they even know? It's pretty open-ended to start, I mean, unless the law department says, yeah, go for it, but, you know, whatever. But it might be helpful to give them the starting point of something to work with.
Yeah. Well, I think it's partly on us to come up certainly with language to request the law department to put in the legal form, so. Counselor Puelo, do you want to do that and come back to committee in December?
Yeah, definitely, that works for me.
All right. All right, then, um, if it's the will of the committee, we will table this to December 12, and Counselor Puelo will come up with some draft ideas, um, to provide to committee that then we may ask legal to put in more legal form. So on the motion to table to December 12, is there a second?
It's not good.
All in favor? Jourdain?
Yes.
I don't know, I don't know if we have to do this by roll call. Do we have to table? Well, um, Givner?
Yes.
Rivera? Did, I, did, Counselor Rivera, did you say yes? Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
Jourdain?
Yes.
Vacan, yes. So I'll say table 4-0. All right, so we're on to the last item. Can I have a motion on 16?
Remove from the table?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Item 16, filed by Counselor Tomlin and Vacan, "Ordered that a review of the ordinance on the soldiers memorial commission be done to update the language." This, um, we originally thought was going for a home rule petition, I guess it turned out it wasn't needed. So we all have before us tonight the amendment, if we remember. This was really just to clean up the language, because it stipulated World War II veterans. So this language broadens it, because unfortunately, we have very few World War II veterans with us any longer. And so, um, we are pursuing the mass general law to expand it so that we can continue to have the body, the members that the body needs. Would that be an accurate summary, Attorney Mantuleski?
Yes.
Any questions or discussion from committee? This is the last present we can give Counselor Tomlin before he retires, and he wanted to get this done for the veterans before he left.
I make a motion to be approved.
Second.
All in favor? Counselor Givner?
Uh, uh, yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
Counselor Jourdain?
Yes.
Counselor Vacan, yes. So that passes on the 5-0, that legal form will go to city council at our next meeting.
Madam Chair.
Oh, this was a live, oh, Counselor Man, um, Attorney Mantuleski?
Um, I just had a really quick question, like, so I was in planning when you guys did the, the battery, um, the bus ordinance. Can you just let me know, um, so I don't have to go back and watch the video, just kind, just what the, the will of the committee was on that one?
Okay, so the will of the committee was that we wanted to pass, we passed the language, but we just wanted to be sure that it was that last draft, because there had been amendments made to an initial one. So between our recommendation for the city council to adopt it, we're all looking to compare to be sure the version that the planning board sent to us is the version that we saw at the last meeting.
Yes, there hasn't been anything that changed.
Okay, that was the question, the only question that came up, because we felt all the questions had been answered. We did a fairly thorough review of it at the last meeting.
Right, right, yeah, so none of that changed at the last planning board meeting. They just had, um, I think they were going to write a letter, they were going to say that they were, that they supported it, or something like that.
They did, they sent a letter recommending to accept the text changes. We just wanted to make sure there wasn't any confusion between versions.
Yep, nope, that was the exact same one, nothing's changed.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Thank you.
Just a technical note, there was that typo on page two where principal, uh, principal was
Oh, right, right, right. Yeah, there's a letter missing, uh, under definitions, a letter in a word.
Okay, um...
Principal, um, under definitions, I can't remember which one. But the word, it's clear that the word is intended to be principal.
Principal, okay, I'll make sure that's right.
But it's missing a I or something.
Okay, I'll make sure that's right for, um, Tuesday.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's, yeah, that's your answer on that one.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Um, thank you, committee members, that we had some good debate and discussion.
Always do.
Onward to the next city council meeting, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Bye.